And the support of the council, looking forward to, if I get appointed,
Yeah, we'll see.
To serve alongside you.
Chair, I've got a number of questions about this person there. I'm just kidding.
But thank you, thank you so much for participating. Is anyone else here for citizens' participation? Okay, seeing none, we are going to-
Marcus got his hand up.
Oh, Mark has his hand up. I'm sorry, Mark, I didn't see you. Go ahead and unmute yourself, Mark.
Hey, thank you, good evening. I'm just now switching on and catching up on everything. I know you got a lot in, Candace, I'm going to make this really short. I'm going to say, thank you for the town for being upgraded and happy all around. Holiday season's feeling good, this house is here is feeling good. And I'd like to thank the Thanksgiving was thankful, but Christmas should be grateful for all that's involved. To all, to the boards and everybody that's in here in the, be grateful around holiday, Christmas time when it comes, and the Hanukkah when the lights are, light it up, and be grateful and holiday filled for all around. To each have a good night and a good meeting. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Mark. Is there anyone else here for citizens' participation? Seeing none, we will go ahead and move on to our first scheduled appointment tonight, which is a legal update. We have attorney Lisa Mead here with us tonight and in person, which is good to see you. So let me just turn it over to you. Make sure you turn on your microphone now.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair and members of the boards. Good to be here on one of our legal updates. So I'm going to run through a few things to give you an update on where we are and some pieces of litigation without getting into the details, of course, and some other matters that are happening in town that we're involved in. So as you all know, the petition of NSTAR at the Energy Siding Board is still pending. It's been a while since we have been waiting on their decision. Of course, we had more testimony that we finally submitted in 2020, and we've heard nothing since. And that's basically the status of that. Of course, depending on what that result is, the town may or may not be pleased with it, and your next level of appeal would be to the Supreme Judicial Court by statute. So we'll have to wait and see what happens with that.
Excuse me for interrupting, but do you think there's likely to be action?
I-
Maybe I'm being too optimistic, but I think at this point, at some point, they kind of-
Well, yeah, they're going to have to do something, but I can't, I have no, I can't predict that. It's impossible to predict that. The next matter is a matter that we were taking a passive role in, and that was the Rock Many versus the Ashland Conservation Commission and Steve Hickey. Those parties, that was an order of conditions that was approved, that was appealed for superseding order. Those parties met in mediation over a series of two days and resolved that matter, and a stipulation of dismissal should be filed shortly.
Was that probably up at night?
It is.
Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you.
We have a matter in front of the ATB, which is a little bit different than what we usually have related to the ATB. This has to do with a water service charge, and that matter goes in front of the ATB. It was continued to February 9th, but we're working with Doug Small to try to resolve that issue before we have to go to a hearing on it.
What is ATB?
The Appellate Tax Board.
Okay, thank you.
An update relative to affordable housing. You all know about the Carl Galani Circle housing. So we were successful in getting that sale put off. Well, the foreclosure sale went forward, but never happened. And so we were able to, through Steve Greenberg, meet with the owner, work out an agreement with the owner, and then make an offer of a short sale to the lender. The lender refused our offer, and so they have rescheduled the foreclosure sale for December 29th. So we'll see how that goes from there. And Steve will be in attendance at the foreclosure sale. We've also been doing work on the matters related to the public safety building. Many of you know about the issues trying to get that wrapped up. We are involved in that on a weekly basis, myself and my colleague, Matt Prevenceur, who is one of our lead litigators, has been working on that. So we will continue to stay on top of that with an attempt to get that building finished and the town services into it. Similarly, with the Mendez School, I don't have anything to report on that, but every once in a while, they reach out to us for some review of various documents or changes that are going to happen, or complaints that are made, or claims that are made against the project. So we stay in touch with the Mendez School Building Committee on a regular basis. UGC and Gaynor, just to let you know about those two pieces of litigation. So as you might remember, there's one that's an appeal of the comprehensive permit. Again, the town is taking a passive role in that litigation. The other action on that is a request to enforce by UGC the purchase and sale agreement against Gaynor to make sure that he follows through on it. There was a move earlier in the year by Gaynor's party, Gaynor's attorneys, to postpone or put a stay essentially on the Superior Court action related to the comprehensive permit until the purchase and sale agreement action was resolved. And the court said absolutely not, and has moved forward with both of them instituting a schedule. And so they're now fighting, Gaynor and UGC are fighting both of those matters. UGC has kept us abreast of what's happening with that and have made sure that all of their permits, including their project eligibility letter, is current and valid. I've all, sure.
Any sense of a timing on that?
No. It's, so the problem is the Superior Court. They're hoping, they may, they may try to file some dispositive motions this spring, but I don't really think you're going to see any, any action before the summer. I mean-
And then do they need to keep, I mean, how long are their permits that they've gotten through us, how long are they good for?
So the comprehensive permit will, will be extended because it can't be exercised because of the appeal.
Okay.
So it's not going to expire.
Okay.
And they've taken action to extend the project eligibility letter. Similarly, DHCD will extend that because of the appeal.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry to interrupt, but is there anything we should consider doing that we could help expedite the process?
Well, we can't expedite it because that's handled by the court, but we are being responsive and helpful to UGC as they need it, for sure. And they, we have meetings with them once every month and a half or so, two months, something, yeah. So they try to keep us in, in the loop and reach out to us for assistance. I've also been working on, with Michael and Doug Small, the issues related to the waste management contract and the timeliness of their performance. That's an ongoing matter, but it is on the top of the list, as well it should be. I sent to you, well, let me just deal with two other issues. We worked, we've worked a lot over the last six months on the 100 Chestnut Street project and those permits. So we worked with the planning board and with the planning office to draft those conditions. Similarly, with the 501 Pond Street permit and conditions. That had some title issues related to it that we needed to interpret for the planning board, but, so those pretty much are wrapped up and moving along.
Was that the title issued on 100 Chestnut or?
Oh, 501 Pond Street. 100 Chestnut had other issues, but they weren't title issues. They were interpretation of document issues, things of that nature. You might recall that. And 100 Chestnut Street is ready to go. I will tell you that there in the covenant that was filed on 100 Chestnut Street, there's a requirement in the covenant that if the land is transferred to a third party from, I'm just calling it the Fafford Group, they have various entities, but from the Fafford Group to a third party, that the board has to agree to that change. They can't refuse the change, but it's essentially, it's a mechanism for, for them to have to tell you that they're transferring it to a third party. And so I got a draft of that authorization from the owners, or the buyers, I should say, today, and I've got to make some revisions to it, but that'll be coming to the board in the next month or so, I suspect, for that transaction to be able to be finished.
Lisa, on that, so we have no negotiating power or, you know?
No, it's, the, the language says shall not be unreasonably withheld. And now you know what's going to be built there because it was all built pursuant to the permits, right? So it's, they're not transferring it without a question about what's happening. You know what's going to happen. So that's how it's set up.
The planning board's moving ahead with it.
Oh, yes. Yes.
It's done, right?
Yeah, they've issued the permits.
They've issued the permits.
That's correct.
Okay.
And then I just want to remind you that the planning office is working on the MBTA Communities Legislation Requirements. I talked to Peter today. We've been, he's been running a couple of things by me. Those will be coming to the board and maybe, obviously, if it's a zoning change, town meeting. But I think that between him and Emma, so sorry to see her leave, they have figured out a couple of mechanisms to do it that will technically be technical requirements that will be helpful to you. So one is related to the RTD zoning and the bedroom count limitations and the square footage limitations, which should be able to be fixed, to be able to have that comply with the MBTA requirements.
So that's become pretty controversial, I think, you know-
Right.
As far as a requirement, another unfunded mandate, let's call it-
Yep.
At this point. And any sense with your other communities that might be impacted by this? Are they just, you know, going along with the, with the requirements? I know that the Globe just recently had an article about a situation in Waltham-
Right.
Where the Waltham Housing Authority-
Right.
Was, was denied funding-
Right.
Because I guess it impacted some kind of capital improvement fund that is, that is connected to, connected to this.
Yeah, so that was curious to me because the deadlines haven't come and gone yet for compliance, so I don't know enough about why Waltham Housing Authority was denied that. Additionally, the MBTA Communities applies to the cities and towns in zoning. It's a zoning mechanism. Again, I don't know why the housing authority was impacted.
That was the discussion-
Right.
To, you know, the director of the housing authority says, what do I have to do?
I can't, I can't, I can't do anything to comply with this.
Apparently, there was like eight communities-
Yeah.
That hadn't filed the initial, some initial paperwork.
Well, the initial paperwork, which you all did in March.
Right.
And it was, that was, we had to have a hearing-
Yeah.
And introduce you to it, and you had to say, yes, we're going to, you know, it is.
Some of them didn't do it, I think that's the point.
Right, yeah.
That was the-
And so that was a really simple thing to do, right? And, but that's still, again, that's not the housing authorities' problem. They have no jurisdiction over that.
That's true, but I think it's become, you know, it's, there's bigger fish there.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't disagree with you. So I have a mixed bag right now. So we represent now, you know, 30 communities in Massachusetts, many around the 128 area, but some more rural communities that are also considered MBTA-adjacent communities. Frankly, those are the ones that are going to have the hardest time because they have no infrastructure. And so even if they do zoning, it's not, doesn't make sense, right? Because you, there's no infrastructure to give water and sewer even if they were to zone something. So it's my understanding that the new administration is looking at how to marry the need for infrastructure if you're going to impose the more dense development, right? So there's no answer to that, obviously, because we're not in that new administration yet. But, you know, there's, there are deadlines looming at the end of January, and so people need to take a look at that. But it's a mixed bag, depending on the community.
Sure.
Right. And then the last piece of this update I would give you is, I sent out to everybody a week or so ago, the new 40Y legislation, and it's called the Starter Home Legislation, and so I think you all got our missive on that. I think it's a really interesting tool. What I think is really interesting is nobody knew about it, right? So I found out about it because I was reading the economic development package that was passed by the legislature the night the governor signed it, and I was reading through it because frankly, I wanted to see what communities I represented got money. And so at the very end of it was this new piece of legislation, which nobody has really talked about, 40Y, the Starter Home Legislation. And so it's a really interesting tool as we go through your comprehensive planning process, to essentially encourage communities to build starter, to allow zoning that would allow starter homes. And similarly, that zoning would only take a simple majority to pass a town meeting. It requires the homes to be no bigger than 1,850 square feet. It requires the density be no less than one per quarter acre, so it could be more dense than that. It's a by right piece of legislation. You can subject it to a development to site plan review, but there are very strict limitations on what conditions that site plan review can impose and the timeframe by which those permits have to be issued. And it also does have a, an affordable component after you get over 12 homes. It's a 10% affordable component requirement at 110% median income.
Oh, wow.
Okay? So it's a really interesting piece of legislation, and as you do your comprehensive plan, we'll be working with the town to take a look at that.
Okay, before, before, just hold on one second. I'm just going to push the pause button just for one second-
Sure.
Just because I want to be able to make sure we have a chance to ask Lisa questions, but I just want to open up, we have a hearing that's scheduled for 6:45, which I want to go ahead and, and open. So this is in the matter of Honto Restaurant, 380 Union Street, Ashland. The purpose of the hearing, on November 30th, 2022, notice of this hearing was provided to the owner of Honto Restaurant pursuant to general law, Chapter 138, Section 64 and Section 3-2E of the Town of Ashland Charter. The subject to be discussed is whether Honto violated the provisions of 204 CMR 2.052 and/or Section 4D6 of the town's regulations governing alcohol licenses by permitting any disorder, disturbance, or illegally, illegality of any kind to take place on the licensed premises regarding an incident where at, at or about 2141 on November 23rd, 2022, a 20-year-old patron was openly drinking from an alcohol bottle. When told to stop, physically assaulted employee within the premises. The patron was restrained and the police were called. All of the facts are more specifically set forth in the police report on record with the select board office. And the hearing will be held pursuant to the provisions of general law, Chapter 138, Subsection 30, 64. So if I could get a motion to open, so moved. In a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now a motion to suspend the hearing until we're finished with our legal update.
Yes. Could I get a second on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you all. So we'll get back to the, to the Honto hearing in just a minute. We're just going to finish up with, with our legal updates.
So that's all ahead on that, but I'm happy to take any questions.
Sorry.
Just curious, what's, what's a starter home in today's market?
How much does it cost?
No, no, but, yeah.
Well, well, so what they've tried to limit it, it can't be bigger than 1,850 square feet.
Yeah, which is still fairly sizable.
It's, oh, and I, the other thing, 50, if 50% of the homes you build in a development have to be three-bedroom. So that's the other part of the requirement.
They have to be three?
They have to be three-bedroom.
Have to be 1,850.
At the 1,850, they're trying to, they're trying to make homes-
For families.
For families that are affordable at 110% median income or greater.
To make it affordable, you at least have to have at least 12 units.
Yes, otherwise you can do 11 and under, and you don't have to include the affordable units.
So there's an inclusionary-
Built-in.
Component to this.
Built into it, correct.
And that takes effect when?
Well, it's already in effect, it was signed into law on November 10th, but you have to adopt it, like any other zoning.
Okay.
So you would have to adopt it, and there is a process. It's similar to 40R insofar as when you put your zoning together, you have to have the zoning reviewed by DHCD, then it comes back out, you go to town meeting, only a simple majority, then you get your final zoning package reviewed by DHCD, and then it's, it's passed. It can be an underlying, it can be an overlay district or a base district.
So basically, it's homes, you know, if I think about like the neighborhood that I live near, Webster Road, Prospect Heights, Small Capes, three bedrooms, that size home.
I don't, I don't know, but they're 1,850 square feet.
1,850 square feet, okay. Interesting.
So it's, I think it's really interesting.
Yeah.
And as you look through, it's a kind of a nice timing as you look through your comprehensive plan-
Yeah.
Moving forward.
Okay.
So, okay?
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions for Lisa or?
No, no, I appreciate the, those advisories you send out. I think they're, I think, I'm sure we all do.
Yeah, they're very helpful.
Try to stay on top of that. I suspect after January 1, there'll be a number of them.
Yeah.
So now, Lisa, you're, you're on our schedule to come every other month.
Every other month, as we work out the-
As we have work.
Right, yep.
So the next time you'll be-
February.
February, okay, so.
Sounds good.
January, the MMA.
And we'll see you in January, the MMA. I mean, I'll see you if you're here on Wednesday mornings, but otherwise, I'll see you, yeah, well, we have a booth at the MMA.
Great.
See you then.
So you'll still be coming here on Wednesday?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
I do.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Good to see all of you.
Okay.
Happy holidays.
All right. So, okay, so let's go back to, we had opened up the, the Honto hearing. Do I need to do a motion to-
Motion to reopen?
Reopen?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're going to reopen the hearing. So prior to offering any evidence, I asked if there's anyone here that will be presenting evidence to the board to stand and raise your right hand and repeat after me. Is that anyone that's here to, to speak? Aye, state your name.
Aye.
Swear that the testimony I am about to provide is the whole truth.
Aye, testimony.
Great, thank you. So the purpose tonight really is to, to hear from the different parties that were involved in this, in this incident, to determine if there is a clear liquor license violation. And I think more, as part of that, also to generally discuss ways that we can prevent this from, from happening in the future, because I think that all of us in this room do not want a repeat incident as to what happened the day before Thanksgiving. So, so thank you all for being here tonight. I'm going to start off with our police chief, Cara Rossi, is here with us this evening. Do you want to come to the microphone and kind of give us a, give us an overview of what happened that evening?
Sure. So on November 23rd, the night before Thanksgiving, which is historically known in this area, at least in the Northeast, as a time when a lot of high school informal reunions happen, bars and restaurants tend to prepare for that type of extra crowd. At about 9:41 PM, my department got called to Honto. The officers who arrived, Detective Girardi was the first one, he was actually in the parking lot. He was approached by patrons. He estimated there were about 150 to 200 people in the crowd, both inside the restaurant and outside. He also said it was a very young crowd. He arrived and saw the owner, who, I have to say, my entire department, and I don't have a personal knowledge, I'm going by what my department tells me, the owner is historically very cooperative with officers anytime they need information. Again, that evening, he was cooperative. They were holding down a subject. Through an investigation, they realized that this 20-year-old party had been drinking from a bottle of Grey Goose. They don't know if he stole it from behind the bar or brought it in with him in a backpack. But the, for lack of a better term, the quasi-security that the owner had in place for that evening had questioned him and asked him to leave based on him passing around a bottle of alcohol. He became enraged and hit another employee for, I believe, employee over the head with a beer bottle. When my department arrived, they were holding this party outside on the ground. Subsequent investigation found a holster, a leather gun holster, no firearm, but because of the large crowd, the inability to control the crowd, the lack of police personnel that we had available, they shut the bar down for the evening, which they agreed to. They didn't give the officers a hard time. Search the premises, never located a firearm. However, there was a threat to a victim of assault with the firearm. I don't know if one ever existed. So needless to say, the fact that the arrested party was 20 years old, he did not have any ID on him, not on his person, not in his clothing, not in his backpack, or any of his belongings. So my question is, did he get carded when he came in? That we don't know. So the police department is concerned with the lack of communication from the establishment. I think this is, was very avoidable. If at any point the staff had felt like the crowd was getting out of control, that they couldn't handle it, they would just simply have to make a phone call. We would send our available personnel and even call for mutual aid from area towns if we had to. So the size of the crowd, the age of the crowd, the drinking from the bottle, and the lack of communication is where I'm concerned with Honto.
Thank you. And just, just for clarification, there was, there was an arrest made and the, the person that was charged, what, what were they charged with?
They were charged with assault and battery with a dangerous weapon, the beer bottle, assault and battery on the same victim, threatening to commit a crime, the assault with the firearm, the alleged assault, and destruction of property that was in our cell. He proceeded to destroy our cell and accost taxpayers to have a hazmat company come in and clean it up.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Can we ask any questions at this point?
Um, why don't, why don't I, why don't we hear from both sides, and then we'll open it up for questions for, for, for everyone?
Should I have a seat?
Yep, you can go ahead and have a seat, so. Are you here on behalf of, of Mr. Jang? Yep?
Sure.
Come on, come on.
My name is Attorney Victor Denaro. I'm at 945 Conker Street in Framingham, Massachusetts, and I represent the licensee tonight. Also here are two gentlemen that were sitting at the table next to the 20-year-old's table, and they will provide some brief testimony relative to what they observed, what they saw, and what they heard, and what they did. I'm not sure what the process is that you want, how you want me to do this. I certainly can make a brief statement about what I know about the facts. I'd be happy to do that, and then I can have them fill in if you would like me to proceed that way.
Sure.
Okay. So on that evening, customarily, you know, everybody comes back to town, a lot of college kids, a lot of people that are living in different states. It's the night before Thanksgiving, all the, the local restaurants and bars, Mexico City, Honto, Ashland Ale House, TJ's, the Stone, Stones. Usually, there's a large crowd at those facilities on that evening, historically in Ashland. On this evening, there was a 20-year-old who came into the restaurant at about 20 minutes before this incident occurred. Prior to that time, the restaurant contained the usual crowd at Honto, which was, is more of a middle-aged crowd, frankly, and they had the, the younger crowd mixed in also. Somehow, that evening, a bottle of Grey Goose vodka came into the restaurant, we believe through that 20-year-old young man, or the four other people he was with. He was with another man and then three females. Somehow, that bottle got passed around at his table. As soon as that was seen by a, am I allowed to use names? By, by a Mr. Fleet, who was at the restaurant and who has worked on and off at the restaurant. He approached my client and said, hey, listen, there's some guy in here with a bottle, and they were taking sips from the bottle. There'll be evidence, I suggest, that on that evening, as soon as that happened, my client immediately went over and said, hey, listen, you got to leave the restaurant. You can't be drinking from a, a bottle. We believe the bottle was not obtained from the bar, that the, the bottles that are used from the bar are behind the bar, and that the patron couldn't have received the bottle from that location. So there's no evidence that they ever served a 20-year-old. There's no evidence that anyone at that table, and I expect the witnesses to confirm this, that anyone at that table was served alcohol. The evidence is that as soon as they saw what was going on, my client approached him, said, listen, you got to leave the bar. I expect them to also testify that those, he'd only, he didn't only just ask him once, he asked him several times in a low voice, trying to keep some control of the situation. At some point, the witnesses will say, they thought he was calm and was going to leave, and then in one second, he went from zero to 100. Kind of went very aggressive. It was helped by these two gentlemen who were patrons, and, and are regular patrons over at, at Honto, and are local town residents. So there was five people that surrounded him and tried to ask- Um, so there was five people that surrounded him and tried to escort him out. As he's leaving the bar, the person that identified him holding that, having the bottle, was in the vicinity. This guy somehow, the twenty-year-old grabbed another, a beer bottle off a table somewhere, smacked him in the head, broke the bottle, and cut his hand. At that time, the police were, had already been called because Ray, the licensee, said, I'm gonna call the police if you don't leave. You know, if you don't, uh, leave the premises. He said, fine, call the police. Ray started to call the police, and that's when everything kind of, uh, was, kinda was set off. My understanding is this was a very brief encounter. That they, the, the facility, the restaurant side, the place where they have the bar and the, and the, it was karaoke night. And the karaoke spot was calm before this incident. It was a full night, a, a, a large crowd, as it usually is that night before Thanksgiving in all these restaurants in, in town. And, uh, they got him out to the sidewalk. Immediately then the police show up. Um, and they're holding him down on the sidewalk. Police take over, they treat the hand, they call EMS for the, for, uh, Mr. Fleet, who had been hit in the head with the bottle, and for, uh, the, uh, twenty-year-old. They give him some first aid, they put him in the car. Police wait for everybody to leave the, uh, the, um, the bar. And they told him, uh, tell, they told the crowd, you know, the bar's closed, uh, the restaurant's closed. And Ray had already, as soon as this happened, uh, the licensee already had told everybody, you know what? Night's over, stop leaving. So, there were a lot of people in the parking lot, I understand, when the police were arriving. At no time did they serve, uh, alcohol to this individual or any minor. At no time did they permit a disturbance to occur. It's an unfortunate incident, you know, they have thousands of, thousands of patron encounters every year at, uh, at, uh, Honto. And on this particular occasion, for about a minute, there was a disturbance. But, but it was not condoned, permitted. My client did everything he could to try to de-escalate it and, and take care of the situation. And that is what I expect these two witnesses will, will testify to. Do you have any questions for me? I'd be happy to answer them.
I would love to pick Matt and Chief to be, allow Attorney to finish his statement and then to ask questions amongst, amongst us. I would just like to, what was provided, uh, not just a police report, but with what, if they apparently, if there's any context that's provided, it's just, you know.
Sounds good. I think that, that's, that i- if, if you're, um, done with your statement, we'll hear from anyone else that would like to speak.
Yeah, if I can just say, uh, uh, kinda give like a brief closing before you hear from the witnesses. You know, the section four D six of the Ashland regulations, they kinda mirror the, the Code of Mass Regulations. Code of Mass Regulations two oh four, CMR two oh five, section two, um, says that no licensee shall permit any, and the, the key operative word to all of this is permit. Licensee shall permit any disorder, disturbance, or illegality of any kind to take place in or on the licensed premises. And the state, the, uh, town regulations basically say the same thing. All right? In this case, in fact, what happened was, um, the restaurant didn't serve alcohol to a minor. Soon as they were confronted with the fact that there was a bottle that had come in from outside, immediately, their people were in place to try to de-escalate it and try to remove the patron in a calm manner. Unfortunately, sometimes that doesn't happen. He tried, my client Ray tried to ask them to leave. He tried to de-escalate the situation. When that failed, he called the police. As soon as the police got called, then the twenty-year-old went off. He cooperated with the police when they got there. He let them look at the videotape. He let them go in the back room. He let them search the entire premises. Outside on the sidewalk, after they had the young man on the ground and were holding him for the police, my client looked down the sidewalk in front of the hair salon, I, I think it's Salon one oh one, which is the building right next door. About maybe ten feet away from them, Ray saw, uh, an old holster without a gun in it, outside of the premises. He would describe it as a broken old holster. Don't know where it came from, don't knows who, who it was, and it was, and as far as we can tell, it was never inside the building. Um, and he gathered it and gave it to the police that night. And the, one of the, uh, helpers that was there that night, a patron, also found the liquor bottle kinda tucked in behind, or next to, a lottery ticket machine that was against the wall. And I guess that's how they had, had just, just, uh, kept it from view. I don't know whether they had put something in front of it, but it, that's where they found it, when he was removed from the, uh, from the restaurant. So, everything he did in this case suggests that he wasn't in violation and did not permit a disturbance to occur. Unfortunately, and he wasn't permitting any illegality to occur. He was immediately responded and tried to, uh, make sure that there wasn't a, a disturbance. However, sometimes you just, no matter what you do, you can't really avoid it. So, based on all of those facts, uh, and based on his appropriate response, under the conditions that were prevailing that night. It's a bad night for restaurants in, in, historically in Ashland. I happen to be a national resident of thirty years. I happen to have children that are in the early thirties now, and I know what happens on that night in Ashland. Everybody comes back into town and they go, that's what they do. They meet their friends at these locations. Not all of them are twenty years old. I don't know how many were twenty years old in that crowd that night, but I can tell you that the vast majority of them are, have the right to be in that restaurant. The last thing, um, that Ray needs for his business, based on everything, is for these kinds of things to happen. He's a good business owner in town. It doesn't help the restaurant. It doesn't help his reputation. And he does everything he can, generally, to prevent these things from, from happening. I would, uh, like to allow the witnesses now to provide their observations of that evening.
So, just, um, thank you very much for, for providing that information. Um, before we go ahead and, and hear from them, we have another hearing that was scheduled for seven-ten. I just wanna put the pause on this for one minute and, and basically, we need to vote to close the tax classification hearing. So, if I could get a motion to suspend this hearing?
Motion to suspend the Honto hearing?
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let's, um...
Motion to reopen the tax classification hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, we just need to vote to close.
Yes, so I'm, so, um, as far as I'm aware, there's nothing else that we have to do besides taking a vote. So, at this point, we can go ahead and, and do that, right?
Yes.
Motion to close the tax classification hearing.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And a motion to close, or a motion to...
Motion to reopen the Honto hearing.
Do we need to take a...
We need to take a vote to close, to close the tax...
We need to vote and approve the tax classification.
Which is...
We need to vote, we close, we close the hearing.
Right.
Yeah, but we don't have to do that right now, right? The tax classification...
Well, I think, well, we can, I think, that's it. That's all we have to do is take a vote, so...
Just vote.
Okay, motion to approve the tax classification as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so then we're, we're done with that item on our agenda. Um, let's, um, have a motion to reopen the Honto hearing.
Motion to reopen the Honto hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, sorry about that. Just procedural stuff that we have to, um, make sure we take care of. Um, so if one, if there's two people that are here to, to give testimony, um, one of you would like to come to the microphone? If you could please introduce yourself.
My name is Dan Dupree. I live here in town. I was there the night of the incident, um, and noticed, um, Ray speaking to the younger gentleman. And I happened to walk over, 'cause we kinda watch out for Ray when we're there and everything. I happened to walk over to see if Ray needed any assistance. And the, uh, younger gentleman, um, kinda got a little iffy. Called me some choice names, and that's when Ray said to him, you know, either you leave or I'm calling the police. He said to Ray, go ahead, call the police. I, you know, he just kinda put his hands up. I turned around to walk away, um, 'cause knowing the police were coming, I didn't want anything to do with that. I just wanted to make sure everything was all right. And I had turned around and I saw the kid, um, and the, the younger gentleman, um, screaming at Ray. And I walked back over to see if there was something that I could do to, you know, help the situation. I said to him, hey, you know, let's go outside, let's, let's just take a breather. And he didn't want anything to do with that. Came very, um, disgruntled, pretty much. He, he, he just didn't, he, uh, didn't wanna leave, didn't wanna, um, do anything. So, that's when he, you know, Ray said to him a couple more times, come on, just go, no problems. And he started fighting. And we, um, grabbed him, and there was about five of us, and walked him outside. And then Ray had said, you know, everything's shut down, close it, you know, everything's done. That's when everybody left. I'm the one that found bottle of Grey Goose next to the machine. The bottle only had about maybe three shots taken out of it. I mean, it was, there, there wasn't a lot of, uh, liquor taken out of the bottle. And I had brought that to the office where a couple officers were from Ashland, and they took the bottle.
Is that everything?
Yeah.
For you?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mike Rakowskis, uh, Ashland. I was there that night. We went in a little earlier, probably twenty minutes before these, uh, the kids showed up. And we're sitting by the stage waiting for karaoke. We noticed them come in. They were starting to get a little loud, and that's when they had the bottle. We overheard, you know, I was with everybody there. And, um, Ray came up, asked them, you know, to leave. I'm sitting a good distance away from me to you. And as he was doing that, Ray went back to call the police, and the kid was getting irate. Next thing you know, the kid takes the beer bottle from the table and smacks the other kid in the head. And everybody just grabbed him, took him out, and we escorted them out. And then everybody left after that. So, quiet down pretty quick. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that wants to, to speak on this matter? Ray, do you wanna make a statement or anything?
All right, so, um, well, on, on that moment, Ricky told me, 'cause, um, he did, he tried to help, help, help us out. I did ask for a couple people, 'cause, um...
Can she talk into the microphone?
Oh, yeah. All right. So, we did, I did ask for a couple, um, I mean, regular to ask, uh, help me out, to check out, because, um, I knew it, this, um, uh, Christmas. Uh, I mean, uh, Thanksgiving Eve, so it was like a lot younger, came back in town. And then we have a hard time to get, uh, get a help. You know, that's why I asked for some regulars. And then Ricky's one of, uh, because, uh, the people got, got hurt. So, he's the one to, uh, find the people's, uh, drinking with a bottle. That's why I im- immediately go over there to ask him to leave. And then, um, he wasn't cooperating. That's why I, I told him, I need to call PD, so, and then he says, go ahead. And that's why I went back, trying to call, but, since I'm trying to call, but they start to, you know, like, aggravate, like getting, you know, uh, that's why I went back. I wouldn't have chance to call, because everything happened so quick. And, um, so, I went back to, and then this, two, uh, four, five of, uh, peoples, like, helped me out to grab him out. On the way out, he grabbed the bottles to get, you know, people's hats. That's a pretty much.
Can I ask you one question?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, Ray.
Yeah.
Can you come to the microphone?
Yep. Ray, next Thanksgiving, on that Wednesday night, how do you plan on, um, handling security for the restaurant?
Oh, I, I mean, uh, I, I've been, um, to be honest, like, even though, uh, uh, Thanksgiving Eve and New Year's Eve, I really, uh, been order, um, detail. And next year, I will plan to do that things well, because, um, so, I, you know, I'm, I'm not looking for trouble. I'm not trying to, you know, serving like a minor, they're worship too, you know, when, which is would never been, you know, that, that way. That's what we plan to do, even though I did order...
So, your, your plan is to order a police detail?
Yeah.
When it's foreseeable that you're gonna have a large crowd at, at the restaurant in the future?
Yeah.
New Year's Eve, day before Thanksgiving, because that's a big night. Is there any other dates that...
Uh, uh, Thanksgiving Eve and Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve. Basically, there's a three night, there's a young, younger crowd, that's why I did. So, I really did, uh, I really order, uh, Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve. I guess, uh, I'm on the agendas right now, yeah, so...
Thank you, Ray. If there's no one else to give comments, um, I'm gonna open it up to the board for questions. Um, and you guys can ask questions of anyone.
Sure.
Here, go ahead, Steve.
So, why aren't the, the two gentlemen that are listed in the police report here? There is, uh, Richard Fleet and a Mr. Ridenhour. And Mr. Ridenhour is listed as bar security. So, I think it would've been very helpful maybe to have heard from him. He's not here to ask. Any reason why they're not here tonight?
No, no reason in particular, I don't...
I, I don't know.
Well, somebody could've asked them, I guess. They, they're integral to this, to this report.
Oh, I, I, I did not, I thought you really, no...
Mr. Attorney, maybe you should... You know, I mean, it's, it's, you know, certainly, I, I would think Ray appreciates having customers...
Mr. Ridenhour, my understanding is in Maine.
Is, excuse me, is what?
Is in Maine.
Is in Maine, okay.
And Mr. Fleet was the guy that got hit in the head with the...
Right, understood.
With the, with the beer bottle.
So, but Mr. Ridenhour is, is described as, as bar security, so, his qualifications for that?
Yeah, Mr. Ridenhour, was he working as security at the bar that night?
Uh, Ricky?
Nope, Mr. Ridenhour.
Oh.
Jason.
Oh, Jason's, yeah, he's, he's wonderful to, uh, help us to, uh, you know, to watch out, because, uh, we don't have peoples.
As opposed to having a hired detail, as you've just explained, just to distinguish between the two. And I think it's great that you've got, you know, certainly customers that, that look out for your interest. I get that. And, uh, you know, I appreciate these folks being here tonight. So, I just wanted to, it was unclear why they weren't here, why Mr. Fleet's not here tonight to speak, 'cause he's, again, he's integral to this...
Uh, Jay, Jason, Jason went to, uh...
Not Jason, no.
Ricky, Ricky.
Ricky, I, I did not know. He knows, he knows the date, 'cause he, he did ask me, uh, the other day. I said, yes, we have a, a town meeting today was the time.
Yeah.
He really knows, I don't know why.
I, I just have a couple, you know, I don't wanna tie this up too much, but what's the capacity of your, your restaurant?
Uh, after that, I did check out, there's a two, two-ten or two-seven, two-oh-seven, something.
Okay, you're close, it's two-oh-eight.
Yeah.
And, uh, so just wanted to, to know, how, how do you manage that? You know, the police report speaks to the officer coming into the restaurant and, and actually having difficulty moving through the crowd in order to, to, to investigate the circumstances, so. Uh, and, and, you know, I'm sure you've read the report, and, uh, so it indicates that the, that the space was, was, was pretty full. So, how, how do you, how do you manage that?
To be honest, uh, 'cause, 'cause we have a three, um, I mean, uh, area, one's dining, one's, uh, there's, uh, uh, we, we call that, uh, play area, and also the bar area.
So, let's talk about the bar area, 'cause that's where all the activity was going on. So, you've got one entrance coming in from, from the restaurant area.
Yeah.
Um, I believe the door by the stage is an emergency door?
Yeah.
Correct, so nobody's entering that. So, you have one entrance into. So, you know, again, you, this is, you know, certainly after the fact. We don't have any specific evidence that there were X number of people there, so we can't make any accusations of anything. But, you know, the, the takeaway for me is that, you know, you might want to manage that better. You know, how many people actually in the space at any given time, right?
And if, if I might add, I think on that particular evening, if there's two hundred people in the building, they kind of, they're all in that room. Because on that evening, customarily, it's, you know, it's, that's kind of like the spot where everybody goes, so-
So, understood.
There may have to be some kind of management of that space, moving forward, to kind of limit how many people can get in there.
Right, so, so you've got, you know, let's say you had two hundred people in that, that space. You were in a, you were in compliance, but again, that's a lot of people in that space, and how do you manage it? The other thing is certainly, you know, how, how does somebody that's underage get into the space? And, you know, it's one thing, I get, you know, that you're, you're carding people. I don't know if you do or don't, what your bartenders do. Do they card everybody when they, when, when, when a drink is ordered? What happens when somebody goes to the bar with, but, you know, let me, let me take that back. I just, you know, it seems to me that, you know, having a, one entrance where you're managing the people both in terms of count and in terms of carding, might be good business practice?
Especially on high-capacity evenings.
And, you know, this is kind of, not that these specific events were predictable, but what was predictable was that it would be a busy night, right, that we've discussed.
That's true.
Now, I do want to take, uh, umbrage with your comment earlier, Mr. Attorney, about all the other restaurants in town having these issues, because they don't.
Well, I don't say that they have those issues.
They don't have these issues.
I didn't say that, what I said was-
It's a busy night everywhere, we get that.
It's a busy night at all those places, that's right. I didn't say they had those issues.
But the fact is, the only issue we had was here.
That's correct. I, I never alleged that anybody else had a problem that night.
Right. So, I, I guess I'm just gonna finish up real quickly, because I think there's, there's the takeaway and the solutions that seem to be pretty evident. And I think as his attorney, you, you should advise him to, you know, really be doing the, the right, the right thing, the right business practices here, to protect himself.
Sure, to be more proactive.
And the last thing, the last thing I'll say is those cameras. Why aren't those cameras working? Those are there to protect you.
To be honest, I, I, I really do not know, you know, I, but I-
You're the owner, Ray, you should know.
No, I did a check out. They said we have a two box, e, we, because we have a thirty-one, I believe a thirty-one camera. And in the box, the maximum, only fifteen or fourteen, something like that, we have a two box.
Well, have somebody come in and figure it out, right?
Yeah, well, yeah.
But it's, it's really there to protect you.
Yes, that's why we're, we're looking for, uh, people to fix that, you know, yeah, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Joe, go ahead. Make sure your microphone's on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Counselor, you may want to stay up front. And Ray, we have a few questions. The official police report is the report that I'm taking the facts on, based on, and I appreciate the other gentleman that came in to gave their, their observations of what took place. I'm a little surprised if it was that serious for them. Why don't you go to the officers and give them your statements? And I don't see a statement here from either one of you. Did you?
I, I actually asked the officer, because I told him I was the one that found the, the liquor, and that, you know, I saw the whole situation. And he did not. I want to take a-
So, okay, all right. Um, so you saw, you originally saw the liquor bottle first?
Yeah, I, I found the, the bottle afterwards.
Afterwards, so you found it, you located the bottle behind the, the lottery machine?
Yeah, yes, that's the lottery machine.
All right, but you didn't, you didn't notice it prior to?
No, I did not see that.
Okay, all right, so, some of the information that you provided is not pertaining to, to the incident in and of itself. But you did find, but you did find the, uh, the liquor bottle.
Joe?
Yep.
It was over fifty-one, so the officers, there were four of them.
I understand that, and, and-
So, if they didn't get all the information.
They could have easily, if I thought something happened, I would have definitely made a point to go make myself available to talk to them, either the day after, even though it was Thanksgiving, or the day, two days after. Say, look, I just want to let you know. Or even write a statement and provide it to the officers who were there at some point later on. The officer's report states that Mr. Fleet, uh, Sir Kovalchuk, uh, with a, with a bottle of vodka earlier in the evening. A short time later, Fleet saw him again with his bottle at the table again, passing it around. So, it wasn't once, it was twice that Mr. Fleet observed this kid passing the liquor bottle around. Why wasn't it taken care of the first time around? That's about, hold on, that, that's just, that, that's just, to me, that, that, that's, to me, that's considered a, a violation. And to go to Steve's point, uh, you, you didn't have anybody checking IDs or standing at the door doing a head count. As your, as your counsel already said, it was one of the busiest nights that you have every year. So, that, that to me, you, you don't have to be a rocket scientist to realize you should have somebody available that night. And Ray, moment, uh, a moment ago, you said that, or one of the, uh, your attorneys said, that you made a call to the PD. So, Chief Rossi, did anybody receive a phone call from Hatos saying that there was an incident actually going on at that point in time? Because counsel just said that Ray made a call to the PD.
The, uh, Detective Girardi was in the parking lot and was approached by-
By a, a patron.
But Ray was helping hold down, so I don't know if he had prior to-
Who called? Somebody called, right?
I, I did not know, but I'm trying to clarify.
Ray, so Ray just himself, a few minutes ago, stated that he went to go make the phone call, and then he was called back, and he never actually made the phone call.
No.
Some, we believe someone made a phone call to the police. That a call was placed.
And we just don't have it registered in the police logs?
Well, it's not in the report. I don't, I didn't review the log.
Oh, okay.
I don't know what's on the log.
All the phone calls are recorded.
I know, so it should be in the log.
So, if someone made a phone call after nine forty-one, it would be on, it would be on a recorded-
He's just saying he didn't check the logs, so we might not have checked the logs.
Well, it, it just, at this stage of the game, and this isn't the first time, Ray, that you, you've come in front of us with similar, similar matters and, and issues. And, you know, we can't bring them up, but, you know, it, it gets to the point where, you know, you, you're trying. Well, you need to try a little bit harder. Uh, Mr. Mitchell made a very valid point. This is your business. You know, you need to run it a little bit better. We are the licensing authority. We have to put our names on that license. And I'll be damned if any five of us are gonna get in a lawsuit, because you failed to do your job. I'm telling you that right now. I'll be damned. You have to take on that responsibility. You know, in fact, by your counsel even admitting that Wednesday nights, the night before Thanksgiving, is one of the most busiest nights ever. Especially at one of your locations. And I find it very, either you have a very young crowd that goes there, that's great, and I'm wondering why. Well, I can surmise why, because I don't see anybody checking IDs. You got a twenty-year-old walking around with a bottle sitting in there, and if he was twenty years old, if he was going to the restaurant, he would have been in the restaurant area. He wouldn't have been in the bar area. Now, would he?
I'm so sorry, I'm not trying to disreservate. Can I say something? Can I say something?
You can answer my question first, and then you can say something.
Yes, that's what I'm trying to do. Number one, I, we, we do have, uh, people check ID, which I can prove. The officer saw that videos, which is the part of video, you can get that video checked out. And then, uh, second, so, um, we have a hard time get, get bouncers, but which is I asked for the, uh, regular to help me out. That's why what happened, we fixed that, we got that, uh, situation right away. And then also, also, number one things, we are, since we saw that situation, we, we take care of that right away, ASAP.
The situation should have never happened to begin with.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
If you had somebody properly checking IDs, that individual didn't have any ID form of identification on him at all. So, how did he get in?
Well, he still-
How did he get in?
Because it's a restaurant.
He wasn't in the restaurant area.
I understand that, but he-
So, I don't have a problem with somebody being in a, don't interrupt me, please. You have an opportunity to speak, it's my turn.
Sure.
You have an opportunity to have somebody sitting eating at a restaurant. I have no problem with that at all. If you have somebody standing at that door, and I know what your interior looks like, and they want to go into the bar area, it's immediate, let me see your ID. Not a problem. And he's got a clicker, and he's doing a head count at the same time. One person through that job, not, you don't need four or five people. And that's how you manage it. It's simple. It's not rocket science, guys. And I'm sorry I'm getting upset, but, you know, it just seems, every time we have an issue, it's, it's over there. It's over there. And it just, it's getting a little redundant, to say the least. Because we provide you the same information every time you come in front of this board, but yet nothing gets done. Nothing gets done. I, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, it's just, I, I get, you know, a little, uh, little annoyed over the fact that, one, and, and I feel bad for the victim. I feel bad for the victim who was threatened to get, get his head blown off. And I don't have to go into detail. Some of these guys know Rich and know what the history, the family history is. We don't need to get into that, no, do we? But for that to happen to him, I feel really bad for him.
I, I agree.
Big time.
I agree.
Shouldn't have ever happened. I, just for the life of me. I, I think Rich needs to, you know, take some time and, and, and his entire family to, you know, get over this. If he's not here tonight, I can, I can appreciate why he's not here. But, my word, I just, it, it really, it really, really bothers me. And, and again, um, the report also states that you handed that empty holster to, to Officer Detective Girardi, and the comment was that it was found lying next to the defendant. That it wasn't in front of one oh-one here salon, but it was lying next to the defendant on the sidewalk.
Yes.
Now, if the sidewalk was in front of one oh-one, and that's where the defendant was, then that's where it was found. I, I have to be honest with you. Thirty-four years as a cop, people don't walk around with an empty holster. They don't. Would you agree with me, Counselor, on that, or is that something, that's something new? Is it a new ensemble that I don't wear a, a mailbag or a, a pocketbook, but I carry an empty holster? They give somebody the threat that I carry a gun?
We have you move over, you're blocking the camera from the table, thank you.
So, I'm not sure where the holster-
We don't know where it came from.
We don't know where it came from. The, Ray said, come on in, search the place, see if there's a gun. There was no gun found. They searched everything. They went in the bathrooms, they went all over the, the bar. They searched the entire facility, there was no gun.
Yeah.
And the description I get from my client is that it looked like it was an old, broken holster that someone threw away. That, and he just happened to see it on the sidewalk, and he went over and he grabbed it. The description I also get is that it was a couple of feet away from where the defendant was sitting, next to him on the sidewalk.
The, the officer's report-
And I, I was there yesterday, and my understanding is it was in front of the salon.
Okay, well, again, reading facts from the report from the officer that provided this, it said that, uh, the owner was holding a brown leather holster. We asked where it came from, and Ray stated that it, he had discovered it on the ground where the defendant had been restrained. The holster is an old-style, single-snapper leather holster, and it appeared to be from, for a revolver. And the area immediately was checked under cars, so on and so forth, and they couldn't find it. Now, if there were that many people in there, God bless, I mean, it's just like trying to find a needle in a haystack. If somebody saw a gun on the ground, someone's gonna pick it up and, and hide it.
We don't, we don't have ev-
That's what somebody would have done.
Yep, we don't have any evidence that the gun was in the facility.
No, no, we don't. But then again, I find it very odd that someone would walk around with an empty holster. And you're gonna display, or you're gonna throw away a holster in front of a store, a restaurant, I, I-
I, I, I understand the holster's still in the police custody, as well as the vodka bottle, so maybe we could get, uh-
Well, let's see if we can get prints of it, and see who's prints are on that vodka bottle.
Well, we, we know some of the prints that are gonna be on it.
Yeah.
It's the gentleman that-
Well, like that, and, and potentially a twenty-year-old.
Correct.
Someone has to take on responsibility, and if it's inside an establishment that has a liquor license, it's gonna fall within those parameters at some, at some place. You are responsible for what happens in your business, whether you like it or not. That's all I have to say, Madam Chair.
All right. Yolanda?
Just a couple of statements. I mean, I think a lot of questions have been answered. I guess my concern is, why is there a twenty-year-old sitting in the bar area? We all know that there are ways to do that, and I'm not looking for an answer. Joe has addressed it well, Steve has addressed it well. And, you know, how are you distinguishing between people who are legal age and not of legal age when you're serving them alcohol in the bar area? That's something you need to do. And then the other comment was that Ray needed help. And I'm, I would think that if you've dealt with issues like this before, with a large, large groups of people and large number of people in your bar area, that on those nights, you'd have enough people there to help you that you wouldn't need your patrons, and I appreciate them stepping up to help you. But you shouldn't need your patrons to give you a hand. You should have the staff on hand to manage events like this. And as was stated by your legal counsel, we know that on nights like this, establishments are a little bit busier. So, it's disappointing to have you come before us again, Ray, for an issue like this.
Madam Chair, I'm, I'm sorry-
Quick, really quick, because we want to-
There was one, one last thing that I wanted to bring up, and I, and I apologize. And Counselor, in the report that was filed, it said the officer had stand by, uh, because the parking lot was, was full, and, uh, the patrons were still drinking beers that they had brought out of the bar with them.
Yeah.
Whoa, we don't have public drinking in the town of Ashland.
They told, my understanding is, the police and the management told them, everybody has to leave the bar.
You leave the bar empty-handed.
Well-
You don't go out with your beers and saying, oh, here we go, let's finish our beers, because we, we can drink outside. That's a violation of your liquor law.
They never directed them to take the beer.
They were told to leave. When someone's asked to leave, you leave everything that's in there that belongs to the bar. The glass belongs to the bar. Come on, guys, let's, let's not, you want to play, get into semantics? Let's not do that, because you're gonna lose. That's all, Madam Chair, thank you.
Sure, go ahead, Ralph.
Uh, just a clarification, actually, for the, on the licensing situation. What are the requirements for carding in a situation like this? That's come up. And it's not necessarily directed to these guys, but to our own. What is the best practice when he's got a mixed situation? Are they required to card people entering a bar area?
I do not believe they're required to card people. Like, has been said here, it's probably a good practice, especially on nights where you know that there's a potential for underage drinking happening.
And, and Ray, what is your usual, your usual practice is to card people who actually order drinks? Is that what happens?
Yeah, that's why, um, usually people, we have, uh, whoever people serving drinks, they, they will card. And also, we are in the front, we, we, we're gonna check, but of course, we, uh, and check, check IDs, but like-
In the front, you said?
Yeah.
Okay, so sometimes you do check people coming?
We do check, and also, I, I'm trying to clarify and diagnose, we have a camera to prove. We-
Okay.
We do have, we did a close that door, the, the bar door entrance, that door. Three, uh, three times or, or two times, uh, with, um, our, uh, employee to check ID and stop serving, you know, like, no, never let them, um-
But that night, did you have someone checking people entering the bar area?
Yes.
So, how did, how did this kid and his friends get in?
But just, the point is, you know, because we have a couple room, and sometimes they, they just run aloud. And also, of course, we are, uh, over busy, and then we have to running around sometimes, you know, um-
So, you think they kind of snuck by, or?
That's, that's what, what it is, you know, and then we, because, to be honest, you know, I never, you know, uh, or, I never did, you know, serve, I serve underage, you know, this is worse to me, though, you know, I mean, how can I do that, though? And also, just like, you know, it's worse to, and it also just like make me feel bad. And it, this is not what, what I'm, what I'm trying to do, you know, and then also, when this incident happens, we're trying to get, call PDs right away to get these things. I, I, you know, to be honest, I'm trying to do the best I can, and also, just like, again, I, I went here, I'm trying to do the right, you know, I'm- people's not cooperating, I call PDs, you know- people's not cooperating, I call PDs, you know, um, so, but that, everything happens so quick. So I don't even have chances, you know, which is, they, they can be improved. I, I, you know, everything's so quick, you know, yeah, that's why I'm trying to getting, you know, settled, you know. That's just what happens. And then, also, I will clarify, the holster, the holster, the one, I, I am found one. If I'm trying to hiding that, I have to put it in my pocket, that's all. I, 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 there's no point I, 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 I going to, I give to the officer. So this is like right away, the reason why, because, you know, uh, the officer asked me, I just, I, I just pointed, I said, I found on the, on the, on the sidewalk. That, that's, that's what happened, you know. I mean, i- if I'm trying to hiding anything, I'm just like, put it in my pocket, done, you know. So I'm not trying to do that, though. I'm just trying to, you know, cooperate, you know, everything.
Yeah.
You know, trying to do the best I can. And then, also, the drink, you know, um, since I saw the kid drinking there, we going to take care of it immediately. Not just like saying, "Well, if I saw them drinking, well, of course, we're gonna take care of it immediately." Well, this is, I know this against, against my, my license. There's no point, no such point. I going to sit there, watching them drinking, second come around, and then I'm, I'm going to go there, stop them. There's, I, I mean, to be honest, yeah, I'm not, sorry.
Just, the police report also talks about nip bottles being found in the bathroom as well. And I'm not, you know, I'm not clear, you know, clearly a nip bottle, you can stick anywhere. I get it. You know, I guess the challenge for you is, how do you control patrons coming in-
Yes.
Drinking in alcohol when they shouldn't be, you know, we're clearly, it's not allowed.
Yeah. Number one, I want to clarify, I'm not a cop. I'm not allowed to search people, number one. And then, second, that's why I did the order detail, trying to take care of this major three days, which is I did. Yeah, so, that's what I'm trying to do.
So you haven't, actually, Ray, you're, you're planning to do that. You, you didn't do it at this, this particular time.
To be honest, like, I, I wouldn't pretend busy like this. This is like, we never busy like, like this, you know, before. It's busy, but not busy like this. That's why I did a close immediately.
Yeah, for me, there's a lot of takeaways for you as a business owner here to, to reflect on, and, you know, prepare for, you know, whether it happens again or not.
Yes.
But prepare for those kinds of situations where you might have big crowds. I mean, clearly, we can't prove, I mean, I, you know, I read this report, and it says, talks about, in essence, overcrowding. I have no doubt it was overcrowded in that space. I can't prove it. Talks about young people being in there. I have no doubt you probably had numerous underage kids in that, but I can't prove that. So, you know, the takeaway is, you need to protect yourself the best way, right?
Yes. That's why we, since we saw that situation, immediately, we closed. You can ask for, uh-
Yeah, no, I understand that.
So, that's why we, we're going to, and even though, I guess, I'm, I'm on the genders right now to order, uh, detail for the, uh, Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve, I also plan to do like average, you know, like, uh, this, uh, this is, those are three day, three days for, uh, next year too. You know, that's why I plan to do, yeah, it, it, it's, to me, it's, I mean, it's worse to, you know, having these situations, I, which I don't like. I don't like this.
So I have a question for Chief Rossi. So, um, in the report, they were talking about, you know, potential overcapacity. Is, are the police able to, um, to determine what, what is capacity, or what is the process generally for determining capacity? Do you mind coming to the microphone? Sorry.
So for fire codes, that'd be more of the fire department issue. Clearly, when the officers walked in, they were having a difficult time navigating through the crowd. That would lend one to believe that there's too many people in there to be safe. But as far as actual, for the licensing issue, I mean, we could probably count. With a counter, maybe, but not really.
Right, 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 right. Okay.
Could I just add, Madam Chair, that, 'cause I think that, you know, looking at a little bigger picture, we don't, actually, the police don't have body cameras. But, in situations like this, it'd be nice to have had some sort of video, even handheld, 'cause then, that would be evidence.
From the establishment.
What about the establishment with the security cameras? That would be a key.
But it's something to think about for our own officers, if not body cams, at least, maybe some kind of evidence gathering, uh, video in situations like this. 'Cause you'd have all those, you'd know exactly what's going on.
We would normally rely on the establishment having cameras, and Ray normally is very cooperative with his camera system. For some reason, it wasn't functioning that evening, or something.
How, how, the one box was working fine, the another box is, is not working. And then, which is all the officer, I mean, they know my password, they can go there easily to access. I, to be honest, I have nothing to hide.
And just, so, are, is, is there plans to get that other camera fixed?
Oh, yeah, of course. They, they will be protecting me too, you know, just like, like these situations, you know, yeah, I, you know, I, they, they protect me too. That, that's why I, I plan to-
It'll be repaired.
Okay. Okay. All right. Michael, do you have some questions?
Yeah, just Chief Rossi, if you don't mind. So, first of all, the reason the officers didn't take account is because they were a little busy at the time. And like you, like you stated, you know, fifty to one ratio between patrons and officers. I just, you know, wanna make that clear. One thing I wanna ask is, was there, was it determined that there was evidence that the, that the establishment actually served the person who ended up being arrested?
No. Um, so, it was undetermined where the bottle came from.
Okay.
I can't imagine they were able to get it from behind the bar, but again, I don't know. A lot of the young kids use backpacks. There were a bunch of nip bottles, which I was waiting for someone to bring up, quite frankly, in the bathroom. Difficult for them to control that, because they're easily concealed. I think the biggest takeaway from our point of view is there were four officers there that evening. If four of them got hurt, which easily could have happened, you shut down essentially our ability to provide police services to the town at that point.
Because you have four men on the shift.
Correct.
So those four guys were protecting our town.
And all of them were at this-
That's correct.
So, Ray, I, or Counselor, I'll direct it at you.
Sure.
Um, I mean, our regulations clearly state, especially under the penalty structure, that's a general statement of policy, that "The manager shall at all times maintain order and decorum on the premises and in immediately surrounding area of the premises, and shall cooperate with town officials in ensuring safe and orderly facilities." I think you could make a point that, you know, as soon as you were aware that something was happening, that you tried to take action to mitigate that, or, or to address that. But I think the point that's being made here is that you wanna set up a situation where you don't have to do that. Where you don't have to, you wanna prevent that. And I think to the Chief's point, I mean, some of the things that the board has made, you know, I think a detail is important. I think, especially in situations such as this, or nights where you know that there could be a heavy underage contingent of people coming, you should card at the door, and then maybe eliminate, uh, people bringing bags in. I mean, I know that they do that at stadiums, different events. You know, you, in some places, you can't take backpacks in, or-
They're checked at the door.
Or they're checked at the door.
Literally opened and checked as they get brought in.
Your establishment, I think you could. I don't think there's any prohibition against you checking a bag.
You have every right to check. It's your business.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
And an open line of communication. I think, again, this was preventable. When you get to the point when, when you're feeling like it's overcapacity, before this situation got out of control, even preemptively, if you had contacted us a couple days before and said, "You know what?" Even if you didn't hire a detail, even if you said, you know, "We're expecting huge crowd, what do you recommend? Can you have the officers drive through the parking lot and just be a presence?" You know. We're willing and able to do all that, we just need communication from you.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. If there's no more questions, um, we, is there any other, first of all, is there any other questions that anyone has? Okay. So, our task tonight is to determine if there was a violation of the liquor license. And if the board determines there was a violation, then we have to determine the penalty to be assessed for that violation. Not according to what I was given. Yeah. So, not yet. So, but thank you for-
No, because you might still need those questions.
Ask questions. Okay. So, um, just from my perspective, and then we can, we can all give a discussion on, on how we feel about the matter. I think it's, you know, it, um, to say it was an unfortunate situation is, is a drastic understatement. We do not want, we do not want Honto to become a place where this is a, even a, a, a rare occurrence. This, like, this, this is, you know, we want you to be a good community member. We want, um, to encourage good behavior from the people that, that visit your establishment, and we want to make sure that you are complying with, not only the liquor license that, that we've issued, but also, um, as a, as a good citizen of the community. But in the police report and in the testimony, I, I'm not quite sure, I shouldn't say I'm not quite sure. I don't feel that there is a clear liquor license violation here. I think that, you know, this is, this is opening up the discussion as to what changes can be made at Honto, which I think is important. But personally, I don't, I don't feel like there's a clear liquor license violation. And I'm, I'm grateful to our Ashland PD for handling the situation, and we're fortunate that Detective Girardi was, was there on site. Because I think that if he wasn't on site, this could have been a very drastically different situation with a lot more people involved and hurt. So, um, but that is, that is my thought. So I'm putting it up to the rest of the board to give their thoughts. Go ahead, Ron.
Yeah, I, um, yeah, I pretty much agree with what, what you said. It is a very, it was a potentially very dangerous situation. And that Detective Girardi's, uh, report was very thorough and professional. And, you know, we've, I think we've identified a number of, of, um, actions that must be, that should be taken to continue operations. Some have been suggested by us, and, and Ray has also suggested some. Uh, whether, I'm not sure about penal, penalties we may assess. One of the things I'd like to come out of here with is, you know, conditions that we would agree on, and that presumably Ray would agree on. This was a very unfortunate circumstance. I think, one of the things to keep in mind that, this was a criminal act, and the victims were, you know, at, at the establishment. And I hope Mr. Fleet is doing okay. I don't know what his condition is. But it is something important to, it is important to prevent this kind of occurrence. So, that's why we're putting a pressure on you, Ray, to prevent this kind of thing, and make sure it doesn't happen again. And it was a potentially, uh, very dangerous situation, so. All right.
So I, I agree as well. I don't, uh, see this as a violation of, of your alcohol license. What I see is a violation of, of good business practices. And I think this is, again, I've said this a couple times, your takeaway should be, you know, how to, how to manage this in the future. And also, I think a big takeaway is what Chief Rossi talked about a minute ago, about communication between your business and the police department, in particular, and managing that. And, uh, so, you know, I hope, you know, you've been here before, Ray, for much more egregious issues. You know, I think the bad actor here is, is, is this individual who was arrested. It's mind-boggling that he's let off on forty dollars of, of bail. That's mind-boggling to me, but he's the bad actor here, so. So I hope you take the, our discussion here, uh, you know, seriously.
Yeah, I, I concur. I, I mean, there was no, from what I could see from the police report, which was very thorough, so thank you to the detective for that. There was no true violation, but there's concerns, right? The idea that minors were in the bar area, and they were able to do things that was not seen, and not maybe corrected and controlled as quickly as it could have been. But I think a lot has been discussed. It sounds like you have some good takeaways as to how you can manage your business, so that we don't have to do this again. Joe?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I'm a little disappointed. A little outraged with respect to, like Steve said, this is not the first time, Ray, that you've been in front of this board. And, um, we've had the same conversations about other matters that were egregious, uh, to this. But Town Manager Herbert, when he read the, uh, the chapter and section on liquor licensing, he had something to say about with the disarray and the disorder aspect of it. Well, if this isn't disorder or disarray, I don't know what is. And that's a violation of a license. To me, in my mind. Now, there's four other members. They don't have to agree with me. But if you can't control what's going on in your own building, and in those four walls of yours, that is, that's your domain. That's, you know, that's what the licensing authority is for. And you can't control it, because, one, you don't either have enough staff, or you overcrowded, or you're overpouring, or you're over-serving, whatever the scenario may be. And we've had this discussion before, Ray. That's why I get so frustrated. You know, I'm not mad at, I don't wanna see anybody get hurt. And knowing the people that were involved in this, and again, the family history of the victim bothers me more than anything else. And for those who know what I'm talking about, I don't need to bring it up. That's what hurts me more than anything else. That he had to go through that again. And that, just thinking about that. Damn. It didn't have to happen. It could have been a great night. But not being able to control what's going on in your place, that's disarray, and that's a violation. I'm sorry. Simple violation. And I'm not saying to shut you down or whatever, but you need to be aware. We've had this conversation. I'm, it's like I'm talking to my kids on the wall. You, you, you're gonna have to take responsibility. And you say you're doing this, you're gonna do that, but damn. Show me. Don't tell me. Show me. Okay? That's all I have to say.
Michael, you had said you, you had one more comment, too.
Yeah, so although it sounds like the board's determining that there's not a violation of the liquor license, I think, you know, the points that I made in regards to the general conditions are important. And I think the board's gonna take that, those things into account as renewals come up. So I just wanna be clear about that. One of the things that I would ask, Counselor, is if your client would consider, you know, as we summarize this discussion into a decision, like I said, it sounds like there's going to be no violation. Could we also add in there stipulations that, um, the owner and manager would include, would provide details on the night before Thanksgiving, and the night before, um, Christmas?
His plan moving forward proactively is to have details available. I would also, uh, I think he does check at the door, and he should always check at the door, so that there can't be anybody on the premises, uh, that doesn't have an ID.
So it, so it shouldn't sound like there's a problem if, to agree to that?
Shouldn't be. I agree.
So I think, so I think that the conditions are important, just because if, if we have something that is agreed to, and, um, and, you know, there becomes another incident that happens at Honto, we need to be able to, to, to hold, hold you accountable for that. Yolanda? So I just, I guess there's one thing we need to clarify, right, is you can go in with your family and have dinner, and you can have people who are underage with you who are not drinking, right? And, I haven't been there in a while, but when I brought in, you know, when I've gone in with people who are questionable of age, they have carded. The issue that I, him hearing from here, is that once, in the bar area. So it's not just generally, I mean, they, it's not just when they walk in-
It's not just when they walk in the establishment it's to be carded. There has to be that separation between the restaurant area and the bar. That's at issue, I think. Okay, just to be clear. It's not, you know, it's not just when they walk in because you can go sit as a family and have a meal.
And we spoke about that because it's only one entrance.
There's one entrance to the bar. Okay.
And I think one of the conditions, I don't know, you know, how frequently or infrequently that door, emergency door from the, you know, next to the stage is used. Is it closed? I mean, the patrons don't go out there to smoke?
Well, to be honest, some people still use it. I put a big sign, but, you know, to be honest, some people still use it. But as soon as I see it, you know, just like, do not, you know...
Well, and he can't close it because it's an emergency exit.
It's armed. There are things you can do.
I've been requested that to, you know, became the window, just like no door there.
It's just another access point. That's what I was...
Anyway, okay.
I say something before...
Hold on one second. Chief Rossi, can... So, in order to secure a detail, obviously, we would like to use our officers. Are they restricted to using our officers? Or can they use officers from another city or town for a detail?
I wouldn't have a problem with filling a detail without a town offices.
Okay, just 'cause I know details are at a premium. Okay.
I just thought one more thing.
Sure.
This year, Christmas Eve is a Saturday. That Friday night you might be aware of as well. Just bringing it up, it's just a Friday night.
Yeah, the Friday night wasn't, you know, well, not busy, you know, before because everybody tried to come in by now.
No, Christmas, this coming up Christmas Eve.
The twenty-third.
Oh, Christmas Eve. I did order the...
For the twenty-fourth.
Yeah, twenty-fourth and New Year's Eve.
What they're saying is that Friday night, the twenty-third, could be a heavy night.
It, you know, I have no idea. According to your attorney, it's gonna be, could be busy by absent staff.
Yeah.
Well, I know that Thanksgiving, the night before Thanksgiving, all the restaurants are busy in Ashland. Historically.
So, unless there's anything else from the board or any of you, like, we'll go ahead and... We need to close the public hearing, but we need to kind of have some specific conditions on how we want this to go. I assume we'll vote on the conditions? Yes?
If we're ready to do it, I mean, maybe Michael and the chief can come back with some recommendations. We can... Of course, oh, no, because we got Christmas coming up.
We can give Ray, you know, his renewal conditioned on the conditions. It's nothing to prevent us from doing that. And I think they're pretty modest when you come down to it, right?
So, the conditions are the police detail and... On certain nights. You're gonna get your camera fixed, correct?
And the carding?
Carding at the door.
Carding at the entrance to the bar. And then a head count of patrons.
Manager capacity.
Clicker count. What else?
In regards to Chief Rossi's point, it's the fire department that determines the total count. I would like to recommend that we get the fire department in there to determine the count per each room.
For the bar specifically?
So, you have the bar area, you have that one side of the restaurant, and you have the other side of the restaurant, right? Because their total might be two hundred and eight. But if they're all two hundred and eight in the bar, then the bar is over capacity. So, I think as part of the condition, it would be good to find out what the count is for each room.
Yeah.
And he has to be counting that.
That's a good point, but I don't know if they do it that way. I think it's done by the square footage.
I think we could.
I think we could certainly, if it is allowed, if that is okay, we could certainly have the fire department or the building commissioner, you know, make...
And if it's per square feet, we can look at the square feet of the bar to determine what's an appropriate number of people in the square footage of just the bar area.
You have all that?
Nope, not yet.
No? Okay.
So, should we close the hearing and then vote?
Yes, unless there's anything else from anyone else.
So, motion to close the hearing.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, then we need to take a vote on the conditions. So...
I move that we require Honto to have police details on their busy evenings. Do we want to stipulate what those evenings are?
I think you would want to have at the least Thanksgiving and Christmas Eve.
Recommend, you know, require them to have police details the night before Thanksgiving, Christmas Eve, New Year's Eve, and any night that they're expecting at-capacity crowds. Right? If they're gonna have entertainment, they could be expecting at-capacity crowds.
That's one of the questions I wanted to ask, if I may. Ray, can I ask you, with respect to, you guys have an entertainment license, and you guys are doing Texas Hold'em. What is the capacity? You guys are doing Texas Hold'em.
Poker.
I don't know. What is the Texas Hold'em?
Poker.
Poker. Yeah, don't you have Texas Hold'em over there? You have it.
We do have a poker, yeah.
Yeah, okay. How busy are those nights?
They got anywhere between thirty to forty people.
Okay, I just...
Yeah, no, I didn't.
Okay.
I wanted to extend it, but if it's not that, that's...
So, I would... So, again, my stipulation is Thanksgiving Eve, Christmas Eve, New Year's Eve, and any night that they're expecting fif... Maybe fifty percent of capacity at an event. So, if their capacity is two hundred and eight, if they're expecting more than a hundred people at the event...
But how I know when I go to visit? Is it three night? I know there's a three big night for us. But any others, I don't know.
Yeah, I think that's onerous to expect.
Thanksgiving Eve, Christmas Eve, and New Year's Eve, they're required to have a detail. The second thing is that we would require them to fix all their cameras. And then the third is...
And maintain them in good working condition.
And maintain them, yeah. Fix them, maintain them in working order so that should they be needed. And then that we ask the fire department to give us a per-head count for the square feet of the bar, and that Honto maintains that head count. And if it's gonna go over, then they stop allowing entrance into the bar area.
Does that's... Does the bar area, when it's full, like it was the other night, and your kitchen closes, do the patrons literally go into the dining area and hang as well? Because that could lead into...
Well, no, as long as they, as long as they, you know, if they don't exceed the total head count in the whole area, right? That's one step. And then the second is we can determine what the square footage head count would be for the bar.
Well, we also determine that for the dining area.
Right, but we know their total capacity per...
We'll have our fire department and the commissioner look at that. Yep, we'll do that. And then just making sure that everyone's carded going into the bar.
Yes.
And then, so I think... So, I think we... Our thoughts are to condition the license renewal on these conditions. Okay? Is that... So, Yolanda made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I oppose.
All right, that passes four one. So, we have the conditions. We'll make sure that...
It's written up.
That it's written up and given to you. I would encourage you to keep an open communication with Chief Rossi and our police department. You know, our town is here to help support you, and we want you to succeed, and we definitely don't want you to have to come back before us again. So, you know, so, you know... We, I think, I think for the purposes of tonight, I think we're all set. And, you know, we'll make sure that you get these conditions and appreciate you all being here tonight.
And, you know, in fairness to Ray as well, I mean, it's been quite a while since you've been here in front of the board.
Yeah, we got two years of COVID, too, so...
That's what...
Well, that's true, but...
I've improved, like, over three years. I never had a problem. And also, I cleared the rough crowd, which is I've improved.
Well, let's leave well enough alone right now.
Let's hope it's an isolated incident.
Yeah, I'm just trying to clarify, you know, just I'm trying to do the best I can. I won't put my life on risky line, you know?
Sure.
Because I'm trying to serve minors and losing it to be here. This, you know, I'm not dumb, you know? If I'm still be okay, yes, I will be here, you know? Yeah, so, I've improved, like, I'm getting better and better. It's been three years, over three years, I never had a problem, even though the noise, nothing. So, I think they should, you know, she should give me a little cap, you know?
Well, hopefully, like I said, hopefully, this is the last time that you have to come before us. You know, the only time we will see you is in your restaurant, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, I will be aware to all this situation.
Thank you all for being here. Thank you to Chief Rossi. Thank you to everyone that came to support. We appreciate it. So, appreciate your time. And I know that was kind of a long discussion, but I think it was good. And I think hopefully, it serves you better in the future because I think that's what we all want, so...
Yeah, I will be updated, and I will keep, you know, updated my, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, happy holidays.
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy holiday, all.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. All right, moving...
I don't know, does Alan want to come on after this?
Moving on in our agenda, we have...
We've got a few questions.
I know, it's been a while, so we thank you all for your patience. As I was gonna say, as you hear, we take our liquor licenses very seriously, which is a really good segue. And in fact, as a funny thing, I was reviewing the meeting minutes from the last time Honto was here, and we were doing a liquor license for you at that same meeting as well. So, for...
For the restaurant?
Yeah, for the restaurant. So, we do have a liquor license request from Provisions Trading Company located at One West Union Street. And we have the owner, Alan McIntosh, here. Alan, do you want to come on up, introduce yourself, and tell us a little bit about what you're looking for and what your plan is?
Okay. I'm Alan McIntosh. I own Doragon and Provisions Trading Company, which we just expanded from five hundred square feet to sixteen hundred square feet, making Provisions Trading Company the largest and only one-hundred percent artisan specialty foods market in New England. We focus and sell only artisan-made products from all over the world, whereas other specialty foods markets have a combination of mainstream products that you find in grocery stores and artisan products. Everything in my store is one-hundred percent artisan, which brings me to why I'm here, to apply for the beer and wine license to... We want to focus and bring in wine from very small artisan wineries only, nothing mainstream, to go along with what we're selling and to become a destination place for great food. Sorry, a little nervous.
And does someone serve, Ray?
No serve. So, this is not...
Retail beer and wine.
Take away. Yeah, so this is a beer and wine retail license that he is applying for. And so, this is not to be used for people to purchase and then go downstairs to your restaurant and consume. Thank you very much. It's my understanding that we have two beer and wine retail licenses for our town. We have in our packets sort of a map of where the liquor licenses are located here in Ashland. It looks like, and Susan is on... Susan, did Alan, is all the paperwork in order from an ABCC perspective and town perspective? Can you hear us?
Yes, it is. But unfortunately, to start the hearing, we have to read the ad, and I guess I didn't include it, so I'm gonna email it to Michael right now because you have to read it into record.
I, so I apologize. I had asked Michael, actually, if it was a hearing, and I'm like, I don't think it's a hearing because... So, okay, no worries. We will make this work. Thank you, sorry.
Can I ask a question in the meantime?
Sure, yep, go ahead and ask a question.
So, Alan, when you say specialty wines, amplify on that a little bit. I mean, artisan wines, I mean, that's a huge category.
Artisan wineries.
What does that mean?
Small artisan wineries, real small production, people that are only doing... It's hard to describe because it's... John Luca might be able to answer better. It's larger wineries put out a mass, massive amount, sending out hundreds of cases. My understanding for the artisan wineries is some are only putting out a couple dozen cases or up to a hundred cases, but it's all done in really small amounts. There's a couple of local wineries that have approached me, and I've been connected with a couple of other ones that are micro-local to this region where it's some people doing it, like, they've made space in their home to do it with building commercial setups within their homes. It's even wineries that are, like in Massachusetts that some might be familiar with, like Neshova Valley is still larger than what I'd like to deal with.
You know, typically, we try to balance out, you know, when we evaluate a license like that, we tend to evaluate it with, you know, who, the other establishments in an area and, you know, the overlap or non-overlap for that matter. And so, I think, you know, I'll leave that question for the board to discuss. I mean, I think it's important, you know, we have had in the past where we have not granted a license because it was basically a duplication of what already existed. So, I think we're pretty sensitive about that duplication slash saturation aspect. So, I think for me, it would really be important to, you know, how you distinguish yourself from... I think, you know, John Luca's in the audience, how you would distinguish yourself from him, who has a, you know, certainly a reputation for carrying wines of, you know, I guess artisan wines as well. I don't know how else. He'll have to explain it to me better than I'm doing, so...
I'm gonna just pause that, and then we can kind of resume the discussion. And I apologize because if, I didn't realize if this was a hearing or else I would have stopped the other one an hour ago and read this one, so... Which is kind of like, it's been that kind of a night. So, legal notice, Town of Ashland notices hereby given that the Select Board will conduct a hearing regarding an application for a wine and malt beverages retail license. This liquor license is requested by Alan McIntosh, Provisions Trading Company, Inc., Provisions Trading Company, Inc., One West Union Street, Ashland, Mass., zero one seven two one. Public hearing will be held on Wednesday, December seventh, 2022, at seven twenty-ish. Sorry. A little punchy. This meeting will be conducted via Zoom and in-person. Meeting information will be posted on the agenda, which can be found on the town website, www.AshlandMass.com. Persons wishing to be heard on this matter are invited to attend the public hearing. Interested parties who are unable to attend the hearing may submit written comments to the Select Board's office, Town Hall 101, Main Street, Ashland, Mass., zero one seven two one, or by emailing Susan Robey at sroby@ashlandmass.com, Brandy Kinsman, Chair, Selective. Okay. Could I get a motion to open the public hearing?
Still moved.
In a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we are officially, we are officially open. And I, so, Steve was asking a question about differentiation from, say, Wine Empire, which is literally, you know...
So, John Luca's Wine Empire is one of the top wine stores around and has an amazing selection of wine. But John Luca's focus is still not on, like, micro wineries or strictly artisan wineries. It's, everything that he has is amazing and great wine, but it's not like the micro artisan that I'm looking to do. I also have a letter for the Select Board from Lucky Farms in support of me applying to show that they're not against it or anything, if the board would like that.
Thank you. And just out of curiosity, so... All right, thank you, and just out of curiosity, so like, I don't, I don't know if, I don't know if you've done the analysis on this, but I'm sure the wine is not sort of the largest percentage of your business at Provisions. From your perspective, what is, like, what are you hoping from a profitability standpoint, from a volume standpoint, to, to basically make it sort of worth your while to maintain a liquor license?
So it's, we're trying to build a one stop shop for high quality artisan foods. We have a complete line of high quality cheeses and meat and everything and accompaniments to do charcuterie and build charcuterie boards and wine goes along with that. All of the successful provision stores out there that have, have increased year to year, for instance, Formaggio in Boston, Provisions in Northampton, several others in Boston, they all have wine or wine and liquor to supplement. Some of them, it's gone and taken over their business, like Provisions in Northampton is now more of a wine shop and hard liquor shop where they've decreased their provisions part to a small amount. That's not what I'm looking for, it's what I'm, I'm all about, the, the artisan made, small vendor food and food items and having the wine accompany that, but creating a one stop shop for, for all of that. And it's not the wine that I'm looking for, it doesn't always fit what people want or don't want and that's where it can work with other, other places in town, whether referring people to John Luca or Lucky Farms for lower cost wines, can work to, for businesses to collaborate and work together as well.
Any other questions, do you guys have questions for Alan?
Yeah, I think, well, how many, we have two licensed, two beer and wine retail licenses left and how many all alcohol retail do we have left?
None, none.
Zero?
Zero.
Oh.
We have four and they're all used.
Oh, I thought, okay, I thought we had one left, but no.
Not all, not all alcohol.
Oh, okay.
As indicated on the map, so.
Need more residents.
Right.
Oh, okay. So I think Alan has shown, you know, commitment to this committed, community and has a good reputation here in town and is asking for a modest kind of increase to his business, so I would tend to support it. And I know we only have two left, but, you know, he seems like a good opportunity to use it, so.
Well, we have John Luca here, so I'd like to hear from him as well.
John Luca, did you wanna, did you wanna come and speak or?
I don't have to, but I'll come.
Okay, okay.
Of course you don't have to.
I figure you will ask me some questions, so I'm happy to answer any question for the record. John Luca, we're all the co-owner of Wine Empire in Ashland.
How, what do you, how do you feel about, about Alan, you know, doing the artisan wines?
Possibly getting a wine and, and wine and beer license across the street.
So I believe at the, at the end of the very day, the difference in our community, whether in this industry or in some others, will actually be made by the market. So Alan does a good job, that's great. I don't necessarily think it will damage my reputation, my business. Alan screws up, he can easily close in six months, easy. Because, you know, the industry stuff, there's a lot of competition, but I do believe in open market. I do believe in competition and I think those will be like really the factors that will make, you know, a difference. In this, you know, town and, and country, you know, overall, because we have very specific rules that we all need to observe and abide, but that's really my position. So from, you know, day one, when, you know, you kindly agreed to give me the opportunity, give my family the opportunity, we grew, you know, immensely. I'm not someone that, you know, by personality or other, you know, reason I see, you know, jealousy or other, you know, minor, you know, things, especially, you know, business wise. It's easy to say, you go down, so I go up. I actually did move to this country twenty-three years ago for the very opposite reason. So the more you go up, the more I go up. So, I mean, all I ask is like fairness, equality and a shot to everybody.
Yeah, good, well, well said, appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you got it.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
So for me, that was, you know, we're now gonna have three malt, you know, wine and malt shops, like basically across the street from each other, because we have John, we have Wine Empire and then we have Lucky Farms. So hearing that for me was helpful from John Luca, knowing that Lucky Farms is supportive as well. I too think that Alan has really, his shop is something different. And if adding wine, specific wine will help with that, I think that's a good thing to support.
I think, you know, one of the questions I had, and I asked Susan to answer this, whether we can condition a beer and wine license and, and we cannot.
Right.
You have a beer and wine license, you can literally, and Alan, why don't you come up to, we're not quite finished yet. We, we, we cannot condition a license and say you can only carry this type of wine. You know, we're certainly trusting you that you're gonna, your, your, your presentation is gonna be, you know, commensurate with the rest of the products in there, as you, as you say. And the fact is, you know, Alan had a, had a serving license that he, he turned back in, didn't work out for whatever reason. If this doesn't work, he can turn it back in, no harm, no foul, at the end of the day.
I'm just thankful that everybody's all working together. It's like different types of gas, so it's like different types of gas. You have low grade, you get medium grade and you have high octane. You know, so you decide which store has high octane, you know, whatever.
Interesting comparison show.
Hey, when you talk about wine, it's, it's, it's a little different, so. It's, uh.
I, I also like Alan that you had said that, you know, if, if you don't have what your customers are looking for, you would send them to John Luca and, but, you know, I think that mutual work is, is certainly to John Luca's point, what helps make our community as well as, you know, our country.
Whether the restaurant or, or the store, collaborating and working with other people is one of the best parts of doing business.
Yep, good.
Have you decided what night you want police details?
I wish I was that busy.
No, you, no you don't, not that way, not that way, no, 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 no.
Well, I, I have to say, I, I've had a couple of opportunities to go over to the new space and it's, it's really, really looking nice and expanded and so I think it's really a, a great addition to the community and hopefully you're able to build your, your brand and really attract, you know, customers from, from the region.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we opened the store on Friday and this, this weekend, Friday, Saturday and Sunday, we had over a hundred new customers from all over, coming from Medfield, Medway, Millis, all over, Metro West.
That's great.
That's great.
Does anyone else have any questions?
I just have one question, I, I saw the, the diagram of the store, the way you had it laid out and your wine racks were in the front of the store?
Yep.
By, by the exit and entryways?
Yes, so.
I'd be a little leery about that. Open up the door, grab and, you know, chooch and run, type of deal.
I could move them around, I could find, find a different spot.
To me, it doesn't matter, I was just, I was just thinking of the, the security aspect. I was somewhat, you know, someone, some kid sees something or an opportunity or there's nobody there, open up the door, take a ball and just, and just run down the street with it, type of deal, that's all.
Yeah, it's like, I could look at moving them more towards the back of the store somewhere.
It makes sense.
It, it makes sense, that's all, I just, just wanted to bring that, that, that point up, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
So if there's no more questions or comments?
Nope.
Can we get a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I move that we approve the wine and malt liquor license for Provisions Trading Company and good luck.
Retail.
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 Yep. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Passes five zero and we wish you all the success in your new space and hopefully things are, you have a great rest of the, the holiday season for you and for, for John Luca. Reminds me, I need to, I need to get, I'm like, I need to get some wine.
I need some wine, I need some popovers, I need some, so. That French toast thing looked pretty good too, so.
So I think we're, I think we're all set, so it's.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you gentlemen, appreciate it.
And thanks for hanging in there with us and.
Then that is cooperation at its best, right there, that's, that's what this is all about.
And.
Take care.
Happy holidays, thank you.
Thank you. And speaking of hanging in there.
Who's gonna read it?
Mina is, oh, well, no, we have Mina.
Oh, that's right.
So before we, before we move on to our, to all the, the liquor license renewals.
This is not, it's not like this every meeting, by the way.
We obviously have to schedule better is the thing.
So, so we have here tonight, come on up, Mina.
Half hour was all we would need for Hanta, come on.
We have. Mina Jane, who's, who is our, our library director. Thank you.
Yep.
Yes, yep, yep, yep. So Mina, you have been, I, I like to call you our new library director, but I don't think you're really new anymore. It's been what, over a year and a half-ish?
Yeah, actually it has.
So.
Come on, here in Ashland, that's still new.
I know, it is still new.
You gotta be here ten years or longer to not be new.
So.
Come on, it's still the new high school.
I know that the, the library has just completed its five year strategic plan and we all received a copy of, of the presentation in our packets, but, so you're gonna share the screen there? Do you have access to that?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. And you're joined tonight by Linda, hi, how are you? Thank you for coming too. So if there's, Linda Ween, right? Yes, from the, from the library trustees, yes.
Nice to see you in person, I saw you on a couple of the Zoom strategic planning things, so. Thank you for coming.
Again, I like it when we have people that, that come. I, I, Mina, I figured you would probably end up zooming in tonight, so I appreciate your.
Oh, was I allowed to do that?
No, you have to be here in person.
Okay, okay, I was like, oh, I did not hear of that option.
Forget I said anything whatsoever.
Okay.
So I will turn, unless Michael wants to say anything, I'm gonna.
No, I think you covered it and I turn it over to Mina.
Okay.
Okay. So, does this computer have sound? I hope it does, I don't know if it does, well, it'll be fun to figure this out, so. Does everybody see that? Great. Thank you for having me here, this plan has been a lot of fun to create and had a lot of surprises on, along the way, but I'm very, very proud of it. So I'm gonna do this quickly because I know you're a little punchy. Our five year strategic plan started off with a survey with a, a really wonderful committee, some of who are here right now, and it was amazing, we got eleven hundred and thirty respondents and that was mostly due through the schools because the, Mike Kyra, who's on our committee, sent it out to the teachers who asked all the teachers to provide the opportunity for kids to respond to the survey. So we had six hundred tweens and teens, a hundred and ninety-six kids. I say zero to ten, that's because our parents probably filled them out for them and three hundred and twenty-seven adults. So we had a really good wide range, I think, of respondents. We were also able to post it in six different languages, seven including English, and those translations were made by community members. So we felt like we really encompassed everybody that we could potentially think of in the community to respond. When we did the survey, we found that of those three hundred and twenty-seven adults, eighty-four point seven percent had library cards and fifteen didn't, fifteen percent did not, which is really nice because when I first started here about a year and a half ago, we, about less than fifty percent of, of Ashlanders had library cards. So this was very informative and as well, and inspiring to me. So with the results, I really wanted to do something a little bit different. So I shared with you the paper text of our strategic plan, which, you know, everybody does, it's so awesome, great, blah blah. But we also wanted to do an infographic, so it's a little bit easier to read, you know, sort of flows. But we also, because we had so many kids responding, we wanted to do something for kids, so we made a comic page, which I will show to you. And then just for this event, we actually created a video as well of that comic. So it's gonna be, it's gonna be unveiled tonight. So instead of boring you with numbers, I'm going to share with you some of my favorite quotes. Now, I did not change these at all, they were just as they were written, from kids. I, what I wish you had at the library is a book nook with comfy beanbag chairs and lots of stuffed animals. I agreed with that and we actually do have that now in the children's room, used all the time. Other language books, which we also agreed with, so we increased our language, foreign language books, we have nearly four hundred in the children's room right now and we're constantly adding to it, both there, the teen room and the adult collection. A robot to organize the books, I guess our librarians meet, might be watching our backs right now. A slide to bring you to the book selections. I would agree with that, but I actually can't make that happen. A hot tub to read in the hot tub. These kids are no fools.
Can we find that, Michael?
Magic and Pixies, this was my favorite. So we have to like maybe figure out a way to bring Magic and Pixies into our library. I wish they had all the books that I like, which I thought was really telling about how people read so much and want to have everything they like in our library, despite the fact that we can get over four million items from the Miniman Collection. And I think it's perfect how it is. Yeah, made me cry a little, not lying. So the tweens and teens, also some interesting responses. Themes that modern teens, teens would relate to, like BTS, which is that boy band from Korea who, you know, we've all heard of, yeah.
I did not know what that was.
Really, BTS?
I actually did, which is a shocker. Because I'm decidedly not cool in my household.
Oh, my gosh, if we could, if we could get BTS to Ashland, we would have a riot.
There we go.
Can you get, can you get Taylor Swift tickets?
Yeah, I couldn't even get tickets to her show. We have to have a pool in it, of course.
They said the same thing about the new school that's being built, so.
So they're consistent. Have famous people come here, of course. They should try and tell us more about these materials, spaces, programs, because I did not hear about any of these. Get a vending machine, I actually really like this idea, although I would vend out books. Take book recommendations from teens. I would have the teens help plan the services and programs. I think to keep, just keep the library open to everyone and continue to be kind to everyone who walks through the door is really good.
That's the best one.
It really is, but what I got from this is that teens want to be involved in their library. They don't want to just be told what we have, they want to help us make decisions. And then from the adults. No, I could totally skip over this one, but they were really good ones too. Resources and all spaces in the library should be accessible to patrons who have physical, cognitive, emotional challenges and any other barrier that might make inclusion difficult. If there, there was a shuttle or something, it would make it easier for us who can't drive to get to and enjoy the library, when I know that, and I would certainly use those transportation. And I think the teens also had said that quite a bit, is that they can't get to the library. Having books or programs which address all families who are different would be great, which we're working on. There's so much here that I wasn't aware of and would like to receive more electronic information to understand what help is needed and what services are provided. And that sort of goes along with the theme of we're just not doing enough to tell people what we have. The library is a magical place, both physical and digital. And yes, we don't have Pixies, but we're, we're magical. So the next thing is, this is the infographic, it's a little hard to read, you have it in your packets as well. It basically tells you our six main goals for our strategic plan. We want to be welcoming, we want to collaborate, we want to communicate, we want to create, do a lot of outreach as much as possible, we want to make sure our technology is up to date, we want to have the infrastructure to do all of these things. So we are working towards all of that in the next five years. And here comes our. towards all of that in the next five years. And here comes our video. And again, I'm not sure about the sound, so let's find out about this. is an animator, and created both this and the infographic for us. And we could not be more pleased to have given business to somebody who really loves this library. So this is a, just a note on how unique I think this was, because nobody's, as far as I know, has used comics for their strategic plans. So I sent this to the Mass Board of Library Commissioners, which we have to anyways in order to be certified and get grants from them. And so what they said was, what a wonderful work you've done with your plan, the infographic and illustration are great. I'm definitely going to use them as an example of how to connect plans with the library's community. So this is the Mass Board of Library Commissioners, as you know, who oversee all of library services throughout the state. We were really pleased with that response. Linda Wiene, who's here, said, the format is unique and creative, it clearly reflects a collaborative effort across age groups and community constituencies, it is an excellent plan. Kim Hewitt, the director of the Norwood Library, said, this is the coolest strat plan I've seen. Good job. Bethany Clemm, the director of the Dover Library, said, this is a fantastic way to present your strategic plan, what a great way to, what a great way to take a big document and make it easily to communicate with your community. And Bernard Lynch, who I think Michael might know, said, it's a great-looking plan and the survey response is outstanding. I do want to say that their other, we had another library doing their strategic plan at the same time, and they got just eleven hundred and forty responses, and they're a much bigger community, so I was like, woo-hoo. And finally, I'd like to thank our committee members, Linda, Lois, our Director of Children's Services, Betsy Emberly, the president, former president of the Friends of the Ashland Library, Jen Ball, who actually helped us with our SOAR conversation and our committee meetings, Yolanda, Mike Kyra, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment of the Schools, Makita Warren Keegan, community member who really brought an amazing perspective on our, on our plan, Kirsten Baker, who does not use the library, but is going to now, and Selena Correa Mark, who is Portuguese and is also a library assistant at the, for us before COVID hit. So without their help, this could not be as wonderful as I think it turned out. So, thank you very much. I'm happy to take questions if you have any.
Can I just make one point? I'm sorry. Just going back to Bernie, when Bernie, Bernie had reached out to me, and his comment was, well, what consultant did you use for the strategic plan? And I'm like, I don't think we used a consultant. And he was especially interested in the comic and the graphics. It turns out it was all done in-house.
Internally, yes.
So.
So that in comprehensive plan, it's a new comic.
It might be a comic, Joe.
Might be a, might be a different.
The unknown comic.
Might be a different, different.
Different, different.
Different visual, yeah.
I think every plan should have a comic. This is my opinion.
Steve, go ahead.
So, thank you. Great, great presentation, and, you know, great plan. Thank you, Linda, as well, and Yolanda, and the team. You know, those comments are just so, so great, some of them very, very touching. And the, maybe you've seen it, there's a movie called The Public, and Emilia Estévez, it was made in two thousand and nineteen, and it takes place in a big urban library.
Oh, yes.
But I think it relates relative to the concepts it's talking about, is the public is open to everybody, welcoming to everybody. And it's not a great movie. I mean, for a librarian, you should, you should see it. But I think it just, you know, it gives you that concept of what the public is. And it's really one of the few places that is, represents all those qualities. So, great job.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yolanda, go ahead. I was honored to be part of it, and I'm just thrilled to have Mina as our library director. I think she did put so much into this, I mean, she's thanking the committee, but she put a lot into this. And just the energy, and the ideas, and the thought, and what this plan represents, I think is just gonna, we've always had a great library. This is gonna take our library up to that next level and just help service a few more of the variety of people we have in our community. So thank you for this, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
So, so thank you. This was great. This is, I love, I love the comic, I love the way that it's relatable to the community. It's just, it's great. I have a question. So, so you have, like, these, these six main areas that you guys are gonna focus on. So what is, what's sort of like the next step? Like, do you, have you identified, like, specific action items in each topic, or how is that, what are you looking to kind of implement? Because all of this is great, and it's a lot. And I'm sure you're constrained by, you know, time and resources, and also, you know, budget and other things, too. So I'm curious what your kind of top, top next things are gonna look like, and if you feel like you have the budget to support that. I know we're starting budget season. I know both the library and the Friends have received BAA grants through the Select Board.
Ooh, really?
If I didn't, if you, I broke the news. Sorry. But, so, you know, we're always happy to support the library's programming and things, you know, things of that nature. So I'm just curious, like, sort of what, how do you see this, the next step happening?
Thank you for asking that. That's a really great question. Because I think most people don't know that a hundred percent of our programs are paid for by the Friends and any donations made to them. So none of that comes out of our operating budget. The programming has been my passion for a long time, and I'm, we're constantly building that in all of our departments. I think it'll be helpful, it will always be helpful to have more staff to do not just that, but the frontline work, so other people that are passionate about programming can continue to do that. But as I said earlier, I don't think our problem is that we don't have what this community wants. I think they don't know that we have it. So we really need to do a better job of marketing. And so that means that we need to do a better job of understanding where people are getting their information from and going there. So that is why we really did a lot more outreach this year. We were at the kindergarten registration, we, we've signed up over a thousand people for library cards this last year. Yeah, and we've been to the farmer's market, we've been, we've been to a bunch of places. But we also have collaborated with almost every entity that I can think of in Ashland, and that will continue. But again, we're, I think some of what we need to do is go outward in. I think libraries go inward-out too much, not too much, but a lot. And so we need to find out what do people want and bring it to them. So between the marketing and the, and the investigating what's going on in the community, I think those are my two top priorities.
Awesome. Thank you.
So just to follow up, so you've been to the kindergarten open houses and the registration. Is it the kind of thing where you could tie into the schools and certainly the elementary schools, when they're having their open houses, potentially be there to allow and notify people of the librarian services and?
We'd like to. Linda is actually our school liaison. She was the principal at Mendez? Warren.
That's the interim assistant principal at Warren.
Interim, so she knows the schools very well. So she has been communicating with Mike. I know that we're gonna be at literacy night as well. So, and we also have our second children's, children's book festival coming up in March. So I've already reached out to the schools around, and the PTA around, supporting that and collaborating with that. But yes, in terms of being at the schools for different things, we really, really want to. We've reached out to them, they've reached out to us. We're just planning at this point. And our new teen librarian is fantastic, and she's been really working with the schools on how we can bring the teens and tweens into the library, or doing more programming at the schools if they need it. I know that a lot of the requests in the survey for teens was homework help, so we're gonna see if we can somehow make that happen.
Great. Anyone else?
Oh, thank you for having me.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to put in a plug, or just, you know, the Friends have been really active. Those book sales, they put in a ton of work, and I'm glad to see they're mentioned throughout this as a key resource. They seem like they're doing a great job.
They are. We couldn't do what we do without them.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, Mina, just great job. Very appreciative of what you've done, just, not just with the strategic plan, but with the library in general over the last couple of years. It's been really tremendous to see the progress in the programming and just, I think you've already done a good job of starting to bring the outside in, in addition to the inside-out. And just keep up the great work. You and your staff, and the board, and the Friends are just great assets.
Yeah, our staff is first class. I really enjoy them. Thank you so much for having me and for listening to me, and I hope to see you at the library soon.
Thanks, Mina. Thank you, Linda.
Linda, was there anything you wanted to add? I just want to make sure if there was something.
It's just, it's, working with Mina is just, it's invigorating to me. And the energy in the library that I have felt, just as a part of this experience, and just a part of being a trustee and being in the library more frequently, is just neat, it's just great. It's a joyful place. It's a place where the staff is communicating with those that come in, with them. It's a very welcoming place.
Yeah.
If you have more to say, you could come to the microphone, because right now I don't know that there's a camera on you.
Yeah, but thank you for that. Yes, no, I, that's it. It's a welcoming and a great place to be and to be a part of.
That's, that's, that's great.
Thank you.
One other thing that just kind of triggered when Michael was talking about some of the stuff that you've been doing, is I wanted to say that there's been such an increase in the adult programming. We've always had really great children's programming at the library. The Friends have always had a ton of children's programming. But I think the, ever since COVID, I think you, I've seen like a ramp up of a lot of adults, whether it's like authors and virtual, you know, whether it's virtual authors or events, or it's, I made cards at the library once. And then, then you can't get into these, because they're so full, because nobody, like, there's, I mean, everybody wants to do these, these programs. So I just wanted to thank you for all that you've added to the library, because I think that our community really benefits from that. So thank you. And thank you both for all your work. And the rest, and the rest of the staff as well. For your team effort.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, that was, that was definitely the highlight, the highlight of the meeting so far.
Well, we saw that.
Yeah.
That was a low bar, though.
Mina, you hung in there.
I meant bar in a honey way, too.
Yeah, I know, I know. I never said that.
Why so do you think?
So.
Who said, who thought we had half hours of homework?
No.
Well, we could all be a little.
So just moving on in our agenda, moving on to old new business, police department personnel changes. Michael, you wanna?
Yeah, so I'm glad we have.
No, we have Chief Rossi here, too.
Good night, everybody. So just, I'm glad we have Chief Rossi here. I'm gonna ask her to come up here and talk about a plan that we have to look at our police department and expand a little bit about our police department and provide some opportunities. Chief Rossi brought this up to me, I'd say probably within the first two or three weeks that, that she was in the department, after she had a little bit of a chance to kind of survey the lay of the land and listen to some of the officers. So Chief Rossi, if you wouldn't mind coming up and describing what we have in store.
Sure, thank you. So, as the department is structured now, there's not a real command staff structure. In order for myself and the department to reach all of the goals and the initiatives we've set for ourselves, to really take the vision that we have and bring it to fruition, we need a command staff. I need to have personnel in place that I can delegate tasks to. The chain of command in a paramilitary structure is super important. Right now, we don't really have, it's very lineal. We need more of that true command staff structure. So I was hoping to promote to a deputy chief, then have two lieutenants in place, and the sergeants and the patrol officers underneath us. It's what the department wants, it's what the men and women who work for the department want. And I think it really will bring us to a much more professional department than, than what we've been able to do so far without that command structure.
What does that mean? I mean, I hear you saying depart, so a deputy chief, two lieutenants. Remind us where we're at right now and what the difference is of the structure.
So we, we are funded for twenty-nine officers. We're funded for a chief, two lieutenants, six sergeants, and, you know, the patrol division. Right now, it's myself at chief, Lieutenant Briggs as a lieutenant, which, that technically is our command staff.
Oh, okay.
Is there a vacant lieutenant position?
There is.
So you're, this is your, you're recreating your, your structure here, but unfulfilled at this point.
Correct.
Okay. I have a question. It's related to personnel, certainly, but unrelated to your, your structure. I was on a webinar today for POST, the POST Commission, and POST Commission is Police Officers Standard and Training, that's the police reform.
Peace officers.
Right?
Yeah.
And so they were talking about the certification process. And they were talking about, now the way I understand it, that only existing officers, only a portion of the officers within the Commonwealth have been certified at this point. New hires and rehires are, there's a process for them as well. My, my question really is, is kind of on the local level. The chief, my understanding, you're the certification officer, unless you designate somebody else. How's it work with, with the town manager, who's really the appointing agency? So do you work in concert on the certification?
Yeah, and Lieutenant Briggs, as he was acting chief, we worked on the first tranche of submissions.
Which is alphabetical, is all it is.
Yeah, they just, I think they did A through H is what they've accomplished around the state.
But I essentially have to sign off and say that the chief is the person who can send that information.
But do you work, do you, do you review the certification?
I review the information that's provided, yeah.
Okay, good, thank you.
If I may, ma'am, chief. Chief, when would you like to see this program implemented?
Fourth with.
Yeah, well, that, that would be wonderful, but I understand you were with some man shy of positions. How many, how many positions?
This would not affect our day-to-day operational staffing at all.
It doesn't.
It does not.
No.
I do, sorry.
I was gonna say, in fact, we do have one new officer, and then one person going through the process right now.
Yeah.
Okay, so if you're, if you're promoting from within, and you're taking a sergeant, I would assume it's gonna be a sergeant to move up to a lieutenant's position. Detective, I mean, deputy chief would probably be a lieutenant's position moving up to that position. Okay. You'll have some sergeant's positions that need to be filled.
Correct.
So that would mean you would take police officers that have taken the test, that have gone through the accreditation or whatever needs to get done, and you fill them in. How does that not leave a void with the officers that are on patrol?
So we currently have an administrative sergeant that's in that role. I would not immediately fill that role. I would have a line sergeant take the place of the administrative sergeant who would move up to a lieutenant's position.
Okay. And you have Okay. And you have specialties within the department that aren't filled at this, at this, at this point?
Correct.
So, I guess what I'm saying is, to have a full complement of offices, then you would be able to put the SROs back in school, put your detectives back in the detective bureau, because right now they're in plain clothes, I mean, in uniform.
Correct. So, I have one officer in the academy now and another one starting January 9th. So, those two positions will be by summertime able to fill patrol positions, which will allow me to put the specialty people back in place.
That can.
And I'm always open, I had gone through a whole process with a transfer, lateral transfer, but the other agency was not willing to sign off and release the officer. So, we're looking to hire all the time.
And I'm sure you are, and that would be great, and I'm sure the, the burden falls on civil service and, and the inability to get officers in positions that you would like to have sooner than later because of the, the procedure that you have to follow with civil service. So, I know there's been some discussion, and Mike and I have had this conversation in the past, is there still an ongoing discussion with the union body about getting rid of civil service to some capacity to make the filling of these positions a little bit more readily available? And how do we keep these officers, once we get them in with lateral transfers, or even the regular process of going through the process of hiring somebody, putting them through training, and then within a year or two, or maybe possibly three years, they go to another department because there's more availability and, of foreign income. They're making more than, than, than what we are. So, is there a discussion or a plan, and I know it's probably strategically, and I get it should be, is there something that needs to be, you know, discussed, you know, in executive session with you guys to, that makes, to make sure that we keep these people, because we're training them, and then somebody else has the ability to utilize what we're paying for down the road?
Yeah, I mean, I, I can think, so there's a couple of different elements there that you've wrapped up there in your statement, Joe, and I think so, just with regards to civil service, you know, we've had ongoing discussions about getting out of civil service. Of course, as you know, we gotta make things work for everybody involved.
Yep.
And so, felt like we got pretty, pretty decently close, but again, as a union membership, you know, not everybody has to agree, but a majority has to agree. So, we're, we'll continue those talks. I don't think we've had a particular issue with retention as it is right now. I mean, I know of one officer who has left to go to a neighboring community, and one of our, another one of our sergeants went to go to another community for a promotional opportunity. That being said, we don't wanna get to a place where we are losing officers, and we wanna be at a place where we can recruit officers, or we want, people will want to come here and serve as well. So, we'll have to look at that process, at, at that through the collective bargaining process.
Okay. And I figured you would. I'm, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
I, I just have a couple more quick, quick ones. It just, I would love, I'd love to say, no, this doesn't affect dispatch at all, right? This is, this is just personnel that's on the road, you know, boots on the streets.
Sworn, yeah.
Okay, all right. Are we having any issues con, filling dispatch?
No, we just hired someone else.
Okay. Is that because someone left?
Yes.
Yeah, dispatch is another, that's a whole other ball of wax, especially with.
But it's similar to, it's, is it somewhat similar to what's going on with some of the other, other former officers? You know, there's better advancement or more, better pay scale, I guess?
This young lady wanted a different career track. She's young, she's going in a different direction altogether for dispatch.
All right, good. Thank you, Chief. I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. Just to follow up in the idea that, is there some kind of agreement where if we hire an officer and we pay for their training, are they required to commit to a certain number of years with us? And is that something you can do?
I'm not, I don't think that is something that we can do. I mean, are you familiar with that, Chief?
Some non-civil service towns write that in.
Okay, so that's, so that's, that would be a potential benefit to going out of civil service, is to be able to do that. And I know, to Joe's point, and that was one of my questions in regards to civil service, I know we've been talking about it for a while to try to get out of it because of some of the restrictions of hiring and promotions and things like that. So, it's good to hear that that's still being worked on.
We are working on it.
And I would greatly encourage that, so, okay. Thank you.
Does, does that affect our accreditation, not having the positions filled?
No, no and yes. There are certain boxes you have to check off for certain roles being filled.
Yep.
What I can tell you, and you know firsthand, there's a lot of people doing multiple roles. So, yes and no.
Okay, got you. Thank you, Chief.
So, this new structure that, that we're talking about, that will go into effect soon?
As soon as, as possible, as we can. One of the things driving this is the fact that in the civil service department for promotional opportunities, current officers need to take exams, and they're put on a list and ranked on a list, and those lists only last for a certain period of time. We were coming up on a deadline for one of those lists that was driving a lot of things, a lot of the timeline. We found out today.
Today.
Just today, that that list is going to be extended another year, so that helps with that.
So, that gives us, so that gives us a little time to work within the list and the people on it for the changes that we need to make or that you're looking to make?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, I think what that changes is instead of trying to figure out how to do this next week, it might give us, you know, a couple more weeks, two or three more weeks to do that.
Don't have to rush into it.
Sorry, I keep raising my hand, but it's like somebody's, sorry.
You were a cop before, Joe.
I was, but these are, these are cop questions. So, budgetary wise, the only new position would be the deputy chief. That's not already budgeted.
That, yes. Remember, so remember, Joe, like, we had actually put funding in for a deputy chief a while ago.
Right.
And then when the funding, the state funding for the public safety building didn't happen, we, we had to take some of that.
Take that out, right, yeah.
Okay. And then, Chief, you wanna?
I'm not gonna be asking for any additional funds to make this happen, if.
You're gonna work within what you, within your current, the current budget?
How is that possible?
How much should the, the department give back this year?
Oh, I don't have that right in front of me, but it was a decent amount, just because of the vacancies.
Yeah.
But you had to fill, you had to fill those positions with overtime, though, right? I mean, so, some of those positions that were filled by budgetary assessment, had, some of that had to go for overtime monies, and I'm sure that probably balanced out some of that extra cash that was available.
Yeah, it reduced the amount of turnbacks.
Okay.
So, was that how you're funding the deputy chief position? Or is that, how does that, is that vacancies or?
You know, I mean, we're working within the current budgetary structure. There's some things like in expenses that aren't necessarily associated with personnel, that we can, you know, we can carry over and move over.
And I would, I would think that moving into the new public safety building, there are gonna be some budgetary savings, right, in regards to utilities and other facility stuff?
Ninety-one main.
Ninety-one mains.
Ninety-one main, other things, okay.
I just had a question.
That ended the beginning of this.
Is, is the deputy chief a non-union position, a management position? How about the lieutenants? Are they?
No, there's.
They're non-union.
They're civil service, but they're non-union, but they do, they do follow, they're non-union, but they, traditionally they have followed like union contract guidelines, I guess you could say. But they're still civil service.
So, I believe according to, to charter, reorgs fall under your, your umbrella. And so, this is something that, that you've, have you codified it yet, or you plan to codify it? When? And when would you go out searching for a deputy chief?
As soon as possible. Hopefully, there are internal candidates that are, would, you know, be willing to put themselves up for that position.
Cool.
And then the other positions would be filled internally, just through the promotional process.
Okay.
Good.
So, is our chief and deputy chief under the civil service umbrella, or no?
No.
No.
Their management.
Did we create an office for deputy chief, by the way, in the new building?
We did, it's right next to mine.
Yeah, I didn't recall seeing, I don't recall seeing the signage.
It's right next to mine.
Oh, that's interesting.
Yeah, we've got, we've, so remember, when, when that building was designed, it was for expansion.
Right.
So, there's several offices there.
Yeah, I just don't recall seeing the signs, so.
There's not a sign for the clinician, but we hired one this week, too, so.
That's true. That's another piece of news, too.
That's great, that's great. So, so more to come, once, once this kind of gets finalized.
Yeah, I mean, once we finalize it and we're able to fulfill those positions, I anticipate that we will have a, a more formal type of ceremony to, to honor, you know, those who've been promoted.
To make the changes, yeah, that's right, true.
Don't forget, also in the fire department, we will have a deputy chief soon, too, which will also lead to a ripple effect with captains and lieutenants.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Does anybody have any other comments, questions, we're good?
No, but thank you for the update, really appreciate it and having you come in tonight.
Thanks for hanging around, Chief.
You enjoying the, you enjoying the gig?
I am, very much so, thank you.
Has it officially been six months yet, or?
Almost, almost.
Almost.
How's the commute?
Yeah, July.
July four, July 3rd.
So, January 3rd will be six, great.
It's coming.
Great.
All right. Thank you, Chief, for, for coming and, and for sticking with us tonight.
Yeah.
We appreciate it.
I've been waiting for this item.
I know, we are moving on in our agenda. We have our annual license renewals, and.
Ten minutes, ten minutes to read them all.
No, no. As the clerk, I'm making an executive decision.
That, that you're, you're, you're going to just?
We are, last year, if you recall, we did these in categories and blocks, as presented. This is public information, folks can look it up, we don't have to read each and every one. So.
Why did I think of that?
It's also.
Because they wanted you to read.
And it's also on our, it's also posted on our agenda, which, which licenses each individual.
Exactly.
Establishment.
So, I will, with your permission, I will run through this within probably a minute and a half.
Okay.
All right. So, the only change actually is, I'm going to speak regarding Honto separately from the all alcohol restaurants, which is the first category here. So, all alcohol restaurants, we need to vote to approve all the alcohol restaurants, less Honto as presented.
And is there a second?
Okay, there they are.
Yeah, there they are.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Separately, I move that we approve the renewal for Honto, actually it's Hopash, no, I'm sorry.
Sing Sing.
It's Sing Sing Inc., DBA Honto, subject to the conditions discussed earlier this evening.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I.
Are you opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay.
Okay, so that's four zero one. Next category, all alcohol retail list. I move that we approve all alcohol retail list.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, amusement list, and I move that we approve the amusement list as presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next is class two license list, and I move that we approve this list as presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is the class three license list, and I move that we approve this, this license as presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Club list, I move that we approve the club list as presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Common Vic list, all of our restaurants and commercial kitchens, I move that we approve this list as presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Entertainment list, I move that we approve the entertainment list as presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four zero one.
Four one.
Four one zero, sorry. Hobby list, I move that we approve the hobby list as presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Lodging list, I move that we approve the lodging list as presented.
Second.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Sorry.
Sunday entertainment list, I move that we approve the Sunday entertainment list as presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's four one zero. Taxi livery list, I move that we approve this list as presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wine and malt restaurant, I move that we approve this list as presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Wine and malt retail list, now should we be adding provisions trading to this list?
I would think so. Well, no, because these are renewals.
These are renewals.
These are renewals, so that's, we've already approved their.
All right, so this is the last one, folks. Wine and malt retail list, I move that we approve as presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And that's it.
Nicely done.
Good job, Steve. That was, that was in record time.
Yeah, a nice little rhythm and cadence coming.
Oh, very nice. That's why I nominated you for clerk, I knew you.
Thank you.
All right. Second, so, that was great. So, moving on in our agenda, accept the gift of land located at Zero Nancy Drive, which consists of 4.561 square feet, more or less, 4,560, sorry, square feet, more or less, shown on the assessor's map, 26 lot 62. So, I have a motion.
Just to read it.
I have to read it. So, I know, I know, you're ready, you're ready. I hereby move that the select board accept as a gift the land with the building thereon as known and numbered Zero Nancy Drive, Ashland Middlesex County Commonwealth of Massachusetts, including 4,561 square feet, more or less, and shown on assessor's map, 26 lot 62, as authorized pursuant to Article 4 of the November 16th, 2022 special town meeting, and further to authorize the chair, Brandy Kinsman, to execute and enter into any and all documents necessary to effectuate the purchase of said property. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And that was from town meeting, the head pass.
Right, do we need to sign?
We do, I have a document, so before we leave tonight, I have, so Susan doesn't, so Susan doesn't have to chase anybody down, so we're good. Okay. So, moving on to our consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented, and thank Karen Hickey, I'm sorry, Corinne Hickey for her time on the council on aging, and thanks Steve Mitchell for stepping up to run for the council on aging.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And we should just note, we just approved, oh yes, congratulations.
Yes.
We should, we should know, we just approved the Boston Marathon parade permit.
Yep, that's right.
For April 17th, which is a big deal.
The date might wanna be changed, because it says April 17th, 2017. So, it needs to be 2023.
Yes.
I almost said 2022.
Okay. Good catch. Good catch. Okay. Moving on to priority project update, downtown, wanna?
Yeah, downtown, so I, I'd let the board know that we had encountered some issues while we were going underneath the tracks, doing the boring. So, we encountered a high water table. We're still determining whether or not that's a seasonal thing, or if that's something that's more permanent. So, we've had some engineers out here to do a little work. That's a complicating factor for sure. So, it's very likely that we will, actually almost assuredly, that we will have to shut down operations for the winter. So.
About, about finishing that.
Without finishing that.
Is that the big metal plate in the middle of the?
Yeah, that, that has.
So, that you need to get some resolution on if they're gonna shut it down. Clearly, with snow plowing, that, that'd be a.
That'd be tough.
That'd be a difficult. The other thing, Mike, I just wanna bring up about downtown, I know you and I've talked about it, is just the staging material that's consuming a tremendous part of the municipal lot.
Oh, yeah, almost like all the spaces.
And whether it gets moved to DPW, or even if some of it can get staged on the grass area.
Consolidated.
Yeah.
So, that's something that we've already reached out to Geosil about.
Okay.
Can I just, so is there any possibility that water is contaminated, that's, that groundwater?
It's outside of the plume area, so we're fortunate, we're fortunate with that, because that, that again would provide some complicated factors.
I think I sent you an email asking that same question.
Yeah, so we did check.
Yeah. Because I'm, I'm a little concerned with respect to that, to Rob's point. Because I'm, I'm a little concerned with respect to that, to, to Rob's point, uh, if that's the same flow that comes down from Cherry Street, I mean, there was an open plumes, you know, filter stream that would go right along the, the tracks, and then to the Obaba shop, and then go downtown, so that's why I asked that question, because, you know, I hope they do test it, and I'm not hoping that they find anything, but at least for the sake of everybody that utilizes downtown stuff, let's hope that that isn't an issue.
Yeah, so we have, you know, EPA does have monitoring wells throughout downtown that they check on a regular basis, and it, those areas seem to be clear still, so.
Good, because I wouldn't want any of the workers that are working there, you know.
Impacted, yeah.
Right, impacted by that, absolutely.
The good news is that there's, you know, i- if that was, let's just say something snuck in, right?
Yep.
Um, the good news is that it doesn't have an impact on derm, like dermal contact doesn't.
Yep.
There's no harm.
If they're doing something in the water and they get tucked, and they touch it, they're okay.
Yeah, it's not like their skin's going to burn off or anything.
Right, they're not going to, right.
It, it's more of a gas type of thing, and really, gas that comes through soil into an enclosed space, that's what, that's where the danger is, the health issues are, yeah, um, thank you.
So, just, uh, just out of curiosity, so they'll, we'll have to remove that metal plate and do some temporary paving, is that what the plan would be?
No, we'll have to do some temporary filling and paving, yeah.
Okay, and you'll send out some communications to folks, so they know when that's going to happen, because that'll be kind of an impact.
Yeah, it's going to take us, it's going to take us a, a few days to figure out exactly.
How, how deep was that, because I'm, we haven't had, had, we haven't had a lot of rain, and we've had, you know, drought scenario, so how, how does that?
Well, we've had a decent amount of rain recently.
The last week, I mean, the last month, we've had some good rain.
Yeah.
Think about that big storm we had a couple weeks ago.
I suppose, so when we did the initial borings, we found, um, groundwater at thirteen feet, so, the, the borings had to go in at ten feet, um, but what we encountered was groundwater at like eight feet, so.
What if that's no, no longer viable as a, as a mechanism for getting wires?
Then we have to look at a couple of different options, uh, one's the open cut method, which we had explored before, and, uh, the CS, not CSX, but Keolis, MBTA was not a big fan of that. The other option is actually going down the tracks a little bit on the west side, and running, um, wires overhead over the tracks. Eversource did not want to do that when we were initially figuring out how we're going to address it, but.
I, I don't plan on it, they'll have to build a structure for it to be able to, you know.
Well, they have to add new riser poles and.
Right.
Yeah.
It defeats the whole purpose of what we're trying to do.
But it would be setback, it would be on Main Street, so it wouldn't be necessarily visible, uh, yeah, yeah, okay.
So, all types of.
Speaking of riser poles, you mentioned that Eversource had to make a change of some poles down by where Myrtle Street starts, has that all been resolved, and?
So, the, the poles have, have been resolved, so the poles have been moved. The next step is, okay, are we going to have to dig up the ground that was just paved, in order to move the underground infrastructure to meet the riser poles?
Okay.
We might not have to do that, there might be something that we can run along the side of the road, but if we do have to dig underground, then Eversource needs to.
Replace what, yeah.
Yeah, well, they have to, and not just like a patch.
Not patch it, but.
They have to make it, right.
Oh, make it old.
So, there's that, just a couple of other things, um, some things that I've seen on social media, and some things that people have asked me directly. So, the lines that you see right now, or actually tape, you know, they're temporary, especially in front of bagel table, you know, the parking spots haven't been designated, but people are parking there, and if you look at where the center line is, compare that, so it's a little tight. So, when we do the actual painting, that'll be closer towards the middle building side, so there's that, um.
So, regarding parking, you know, there's this perception, I think, for some residents, that we've eliminated parking, and it doesn't seem that that's happened at all. I mean, all the parking, in fact, I think there's an, an additional space in front of the bagel table.
Yes.
All of the spaces in front of the Ashland House and Police Department seem to be intact, uh, as well as those down at Stones on the other side of the, so it doesn't appear as if we've lost, in fact, we've gained one space.
We've gained one on, on Main Street.
Yeah.
I think once the, the striping actually gets done, and the markings get done.
Yeah.
Uh, if it'll stop raining, we can actually do that, um, I think it'll, it'll be a little bit clearer, and a little bit more in fo, more in focus for people, so. So that will do that, um. So, public safety building, Jen, unfortunate.
Just before we move off of downtown, did you want to talk about the, um, the RFI?
Oh, I was going to do it for public safety, but no, we can do it under downtown, so, um, we had a number of entities walk through the police and fire station, I think, you know, probably four or five, I believe.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, we only got one submission.
Oh, wow.
And, uh, so there were, I'll have a little bit more detail about that, but it's actually the, um, the developer who had proposed, or who was proposing doing what they called the block in NADIC, I don't know if you've seen that, which is a mixture of, of retail stores and pop-up stores and arrangements. So, um, even though we only got one submission, we did get some valuable information that came out of that, which was really our primary purpose in going through this process. Uh, Beth is reaching out to the entities that were interested, and went through a walkthrough and everything, but decided not to put in a submission, just to see why they did not. Again, this is really, we're trying to gather information to develop a, a more robust RFP and, and community engagement process for what we determine to do with these buildings.
Good, well, it's a good first step, I think.
So, there's that. Unfortunately, Jen is a little under the weather, so she usually handles the public safety building, I'm not sure there's been much that has changed.
No, the last time I spoke with her, it's, uh, everything's, you know, basically what it was last. Yeah, I think the one thing we're waiting for, uh, right now is, is the, uh, is for some, a modification of a door, uh, interior door, so that we can, uh, then get that, hopefully, that partial occupancy of the Police Department.
Yep.
And the Fire Department, uh, uh, administration.
It's in the lobby area, so that's kind of important to get that taken care of first, so.
Then, same thing with Mendez, I don't think there was, there's been much at all.
Moving along.
Yep.
One thing about public safety, is everybody aware or attending the tour on Friday, one o'clock?
Friday.
That's the plan, as of right now, unless work steps in the way, but that's the plan.
One o'clock. One o'clock.
Yeah, okay, good, okay. You won't be able to, I'll take you over separately.
Go to Honto's after.
On New Year's Eve?
Good luck.
Carded it, the door. So, Valentine Project, I had sent around earlier today, just some pictures from, uh, from the progress going on there. Just to summarize, there's some parts that are better than we expected, and some parts that are worse, um, so I guess it all evens out.
The breakthroughs can be very kind of authentic, kind of like, you know.
Well, exactly, so they're in the process now of fixing the foundation and fixing the joists, if you had seen the basement before, you would know how cluttered and dirty it was, with some of these pictures, you can actually see in the basement, they've done a pretty good job of cleaning it out, getting it prepared for concrete, so. That's, that's great, but, uh, one thing we do really need to talk about is we need to talk about the conservation restriction, and, um, so just, you know, I thi, I think we need to figure out some way to make some progress on this. If you remember, a couple of years ago, Carl Hackinson had, um, had, uh, let us know that an org, he had talked with an organization that would be willing to, um, hold that restriction. Yolanda, a couple months ago, also pointed out that there was an organization that would be interested in holding that restriction. They turned out to be the same organization, and we can't really talk about, you know, especially right now, who that is, but they're the same organization, so, um, obviously, the subcommittee for the conservation restriction document, it put together a document. It's got some, some bones in place, uh, some of it was a template, I think, from the state, and then there's some things that were added based on feedback.
Yeah, yeah. That's correct.
I think, just, we've talked about it before, I, I think for it to move forward, uh, and get to a place where a restriction holder would be willing to hold it, there needs to be some changes. And some amendments to that. Carl has offered to, you know, be part of that process and work with this organization, um, and, of course, there have been select board members, you know, Steve, Brandy, you've been involved in the conservation restriction, and Yolanda, you're.
You know, a lot of this stuff goes to, I think, relationships, I think if Carl's got a relationship with this organization, I think we should certainly allow him to, uh, to move forward with, with, uh, working with them. If Yolanda has, has a relationship, I think, uh, you know, uh, I'm not sure what your bandwidth is at this point for, you know, continuing with the, the subcommittee a sense, but to, you know, in fairness to getting this document moved forward, I think that's the thing to do.
Yeah, maybe, maybe if Yolanda, if, if you're comfortable working with Carl, and then, you know, Michael, and, and, you know, you can kind of get, get.
Right.
That would be, that would be amazing, so.
Yeah, and the organization is reviewing some stuff, and then the ideas will regroup in January.
Oh, good, well, that's, okay.
So.
Okay, great, well, thank you for, like, that's, that's, that would, I think that's like the next.
They reached out to me because of a, a relationship I have with someone that they're working with, so, but yeah, definitely, I, I, I think right now, we just need to move this thing along and get it completed, and then, as I keep saying to Michael, we then have to decide what we're going to do with it.
Right, yeah, but I think that's like the big, the next big thing, because we're working to get the, the barn secured and in a good way, and then, you know, obviously, we need to figure out, to figure out what we're going to do with it, we have to have somebody that's willing to hold it for what we're wanting to do with it, so.
Very good, that's good.
Okay.
So, there's that, and then, um, also, the Warren District, I, I don't have an update, a specific update from Paul, one of the things I did want to ask the board to consider is that the money that we received from, uh, the Hall House sale, has to go, by law, has to go into the general fund unless we can designate someplace else, and so, um, I'd like the board to consider moving that money into the Warren District Reserve Fund.
This is the ten thousand, ten thousand.
Do you need a motion, or?
Why don't we put it on an agenda?
Oh, okay, that makes sense, yeah, that way, yeah, yeah.
So if we put that on our next agenda, that.
Yeah, makes sense.
But I think that, I think it does make sense.
Yeah, it makes perfect sense, if we got, you know, if we got benefit from the Hall House, then let's leave it in that district, and have it go toward the barn.
And then, actually, so we did have some money that we had set aside for the, the Hall House, I think it's to the tune of a hundred, hundred thousand dollars, that we're not going to need, because Gustafson is doing, is taking care of it.
Right.
Would you also entertain moving the rest of that money into the reserve account?
Yes.
That would make, that would make sense.
And when you say the reserve account, that's money, is that money from the sale of the, the money we got from the Northeastern?
Yeah, that was part of the one million.
And those are funds that we, as a select board, manage and control, right, no one else.
Correct.
Has access to those funds unless we give them the funds.
Um.
Yeah, get confused, because there's all these other.
With, yeah, with that.
There's a stewardship fund.
Yeah, there's a stewardship fund. Yeah, the reserve fund is, is authorized by the select board, so like, for example, when we wanted to get a tractor.
Yeah.
Uh, for.
Right, the committee came, yeah.
They can affirm the board's major request.
Okay, okay, as long as it's going into the fund that we still manage.
Those are the ones that we were negotiating via, on Northeastern.
Right, okay, but I know we've used some of that, I know we've given some funds to the stewardship committee, so.
You might want to give us a, a rendering of that.
Yeah, that, but, that goes, the finance.
At some point, right?
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, tied, tied into putting these funds into it, sort of giving us, you know, where we started, where things have gone, and what's left, would be great.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, so we know what it looks like, yeah.
And the other thing, remember, you had this, part of it, that, that you had established was what's known as perpetual care.
Right.
Right.
So, um, and so the, you know, that's, you can't touch the principle.
Right, the principle of that, right, okay.
And that's all for priority project update.
Okay.
Town manager report, I don't have too many things, uh, first of all, I, I just want to congratulate Beth and Yolanda and Brandy, I know you helped, and Ashley helped, um, and all the vendors and patrons for making the holiday stroll such a success. You know, the weather was literally a damper on things, um, and unfortunately, it's, uh, we didn't get to execute all the plans that we had for that day, but the stroll itself was a, a big success, I know I got some shopping done, I think we've heard great feedback from the vendors, so.
So the vendors were happy, because sometimes when I, there wasn't a heck of a lot of customers, but it turned out pretty good?
There was still good turnout, I mean, every, every location I went to, there were people, and there was conversation, and the vendors were happy.
Yeah, I know, like, you know, there was a woman who has a wrapping service, you know, and although I don't think she got too many people.
I tried.
Too many things there.
She's awesome, she is great, yeah.
I think, you know, I took her card, because I know I'm going to be using her services and everything, so.
She'll pick up your gifts and wrap them and deliver them.
And deliver them.
Oh, that's interesting.
Yeah.
So, it's a great business model.
She was also, the other thing that I enjoyed was just getting to talk to people, right, you know, in the, in the summer, you go to the farmer's market, and you talk to a lot of people, it was a similar thing, it was a similar sense of just having some really great conversations with people from the community, because most of the vendors were Ashland home businesses or small businesses that are either just starting out, or just, so it was just a really, I mean, as you said, SJC Wrapping, it was great, two generations were there, the grandmother lives in town, the resin, the resin wood company that was over at, um, uh, CRPT, the new, uh, physical therapy place, great chatting with him, and.
The new business that's going to be coming to town.
And the new businesses, the ice cream place, that just, so, so yeah, it was a.
Cool.
Even though it was raining, it was still a good day.
Beth did an amazing job, like, it was, she was the, she was the organizer maestro, she kept everything, she kept everything going.
Yes, Beth, yeah. Yes.
Kept it, you know, running back and forth, different places in the rain.
Yeah, she was everywhere, so.
Yeah, she was, yeah, so.
So, just an update on Burnham's, uh, I think if you hadn't heard, Burnham's had put in a demolition application, uh, for their building.
Oh, wow.
I hadn't heard that.
I, I don't think they have a specific project, um, in mind, I think what, you know, what they tried to do is they, they wanted to get an application in before the change in the demo delay bylaw.
Oh, okay.
But in any case, the historical commission heard that, um, last, that.
Tuesday.
Yeah, Tuesday night, yeah, last night, um, and determined that it was architecturally and historically significant, um, which I don't think that's a shock to anybody, and then, um, they are going to be holding a hearing in early January, January, as to whether or not to implement a demo delay.
Yeah, now, that, that demo delay will be nine month or twelve month now?
It would be nine month, because it was submitted before.
It hasn't been certified yet, okay, interesting, so, so there was no, there's no indication as to what he wants to do with the, with, uh?
I didn't attend the meeting on Tuesday.
Yeah.
Just looking at his application, it just.
It was just open-ended?
Yeah, pretty open-ended, said basically any, anything they can do under different types of zoning.
Okay.
Right, because you can't, because you can't do multi, multi-family for two years.
Right.
So, yeah.
Is the zoning multi-family there now?
I don't know.
Because that's part of the DHCD thing, right?
Well, it could be part of the MBTA, I mean.
Right, it could certainly be that.
Sure.
And then, two last things, one, uh, it's rather unfortunate, um, Bill Brown, everybody knows Bill Brown?
Yeah, yeah.
He unfortunately had passed away in November.
Oh, no, I had no idea.
Yeah. So, I, I did not either, um, I was notified of that today.
Wow. Yeah, that's where he was from, yeah.
So, Bill had lived here since nineteen eighty-eight, had been involved in the town in a number of different capacities, both of that.
Yeah, we all know Bill, yeah.
Oh, that's so sad.
Yeah, it's, um.
He'd been sick for quite a while, but.
Yeah, he'd been fighting a bunch of stuff, so.
The condolences within his family.
Yeah.
And then, one last thing, in, in the spirit of the holiday season, um, I just wanted to read an email that we had received, uh, about some of our officers, so, um, we'll start off.
You know my mic hasn't been on the whole time?
Oh, no.
I'm in trouble.
Okay, just start over, it's no big deal, look at Sue's.
Susan New, Susan New.
She's probably been trying to text me. Lieutenant Briggs, this past rotation, the midnight shift encountered a man experiencing homelessness and sleeping in front of a business on Pond Street. The man was from Maine, and was heading south on his bicycle to escape the coming winter weather, and find work further south. After seeing that, the man had ripped his pants on his bicycle, Officer Foodie returned to the station and retrieved a pair of jeans and sweatpants from his locker to give the man. Officer Jewett also went to the station to get food to help the man on his journey, he was also given a few prisoner blankets, officer stayed and talked with him for nearly an hour. The man was not interested in a shelter and did not want to spend the night in our lobby, he gladly accepted the food. He gladly accepted the food, clothing and blankets. I checked on him before sunrise and wished him well on his journey south. I want to commend Officers Foodie and Jewett for their compassion and understanding. Many others may have taken the easier route of moving the man along to be someone else's problem. Officers Foodie and Jewett took the time and effort to help a person in need and changed the perception of police one encounter at a time. They should be commended for their actions that made a difference in the life of a person most would ignore. This was not a call that would show on the stat sheets, but their actions were more important than any arrest or citation. Respectfully Sergeant Kevin Pierce, so, um, nice heartwarming story for the, um, for the holiday season. I, I think it just personifies our employees to a T. Many thanks to Officers Foodie and Jewett and Sergeant Pierce for putting this together and, um, thank them for their service.
Yes, thank you very much. That is a good one.
That is a good one.
That is a good one.
Nope, that is good. Are you all, you're all, that's it?
Yeah.
Okay.
The goal is to not have to do an extension of the past ten.
We're moving on to board reports.
No, we'll be.
Mr. Mignani, you are first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, unfortunately, the weather was not conducive, uh, Santa called and said that, uh, he doesn't do rain. And, um, it was unfortunate, but, uh, hopefully the kids all understand and, um, if we can do something, we, we will try, but it looks like it's, uh, it's a go for next year and maybe make something a little bit better out of it. Um, I would like to thank, uh, everybody that, um, participated in, over, over the weekend, did a great job. Lastly, um, just to remind everybody, we have, uh, no overnight parking on the streets from the hours of, uh, two to six. Usually the offices that are out there in midnight shift will put a warning out on vehicles for the first time, but if you continue doing it, you'll receive some sort of, uh, parking violation. And, uh, so this is notice now that you, you know, stay off the road, put your car in the driveway where it should be and, and, and let it be. Especially when now that, uh, we may get a storm over the, over the weekend, maybe Sunday, they're talking about some, some snow and stuff, so. Friendly reminder, not a lot, just, just a flurry or two, so we'll get eight, eight feet for sure.
We could be in Buffalo.
We could be in Buffalo, right?
Could be Buffalo.
Yeah, the, uh, lake effect. Lastly, I just wanna, we won't see anybody, uh, after, before the holidays, so I wish you all a very, uh, Merry Christmas, uh, Happy Hanukkah to those that are coming up in the twentieth, oh, the twentieth is the menorah lighting, I believe, will be there, uh, six o'clock.
Yep.
And, um, that's about it, I just wish everybody a very happy and a healthy holiday and, uh, you know, that's a great story, Steve, I mean, Mike, about, um, about what those guys are, and that's what this is all about. You know, this is the season to help those that can't help each other, so, great job and let's continue that, uh, that thought throughout, throughout the rest of the year. So, thank you very much and thanks, uh, and I do apologize for my frustration tonight. It is frustrating, more than ever, because you hear the same thing over and over again, and that's all I'll say. So let's hope, let's hope it sinks in this time, you know, because if it doesn't, that's why I voted no on all of them, because it should have been stipulated for all the other, his entertainment license and all the other things should have been part of that, that vote. That's why I voted no, so just to give you a clear indication as to what, so, okay?
So that's it, so thank you very much and I hope Santa's good day.
Yolanda, you're up next.
So, a couple of regional things, tomorrow, I'm gonna be going into Boston, MAPC is bringing together all of their regional chairs from their subdivision, so it'll be an opportunity to meet and spend some time with people like myself who are chairing their different subregions, so that should be interesting, and I'll see what I can bring back to us for that. Uh, Monday, December twelfth, there's a Trails meeting at Broadmoor from three to five, continuing the discussion about Trails. Uh, Metro West Regional Collaborative, we're having a meeting Monday, uh, sorry, Thursday morning, the twenty-second at eight AM, that's via Zoom, if anyone wants to attend. Uh, the other interesting news, and I shared this with Michael already, I got it very late the other night. So during, in the transportation bond bill, there was a new committee formed to review the East-West Rail Line, and it is stipulated in that, that a member of the Metro West Regional Collaborative be part of that committee. So Leah, who is our MAPC coordinator, is going to attend the meeting this coming Friday, it's being held out in Pittsfield, I think? Somewhere west, and then there's five other hearings that they're gonna have, so we're gonna discuss it as a region. I didn't know if there was someone from Ashland, now, there's nine communities in the Metro West Regional Collaborative, so I don't know if other communities are interested. Uh, Michael wasn't sure if we had someone from Ashland who could do it, but if not, I believe we'll have someone from one of the other communities.
What is the East-West Rail Line?
So, looking at extending rail from east to west in Massachusetts.
Springfield, Springfield.
It's Springfield line, oh, okay.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, that's one of the, you know, that the advisory board as well.
So, um, then just, uh, just a reminder about some others, there's still some fun performances happening. Uh, if you know the movie It's a Wonderful Life, you could go watch the radio show, it's happening at Holliston Town Hall on Friday and Saturday night, I had the opportunity to see it this past weekend, it was a lot of fun. If you wanna go up to Weston, the Weston Drama is doing Sound of Music, they also have three more performances this weekend, and then I'm involved with a nutcracker at the Norwood Theater, December seventeenth and eighteenth. So if you wanna go see a fun nutcracker, not have to go to Boston and pay Boston prices in parking, you can go to lovely Norwood where it's a beautiful theater. Uh, other than that, I also wish everyone a happy holiday season, it's hard to believe it's already here, um, but looking forward to enjoying with family and friends and then jumping right in in the new year, and that's it. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Yolanda, Steve, you're up next.
Okay, um, just a, a few things as well, um, speaking about transportation, you know, it's interesting, one of the bullet points that, uh, Mina had mentioned was folks wanting to be able to get to the library physically. And, you know, transportation is, uh, you know, I think for a lot of folks, uh, a big deal. And, so I really would like to, uh, my, my plan is, after the new year, is to get the new administrator from the MWRTA here to speak to us about programs that are available, including this micro-transit concept, which, as I explained last time, is kind of the Uber version, uh, for public, uh, transit authorities. The other thing about transportation, there is an article in the paper today about the usage of the commuter rail, and it's, it's kind of blipped up a little bit, but not very much, there's, they're down, they're down tremendously, and so.
You can tell by the parking lots.
What, the parking lots are empty, yes.
Well, but it's starting to fill up.
Well, you know, it's, according to their, to, you know, to their revenues, um, they're, they're not seeing, I mean, they're down tremendously, so. You know, I'm, I'm thinking this is our opportunity now to review the whole parking lot scenario with, with, again, with the MWRTA, so that's, that's one thing.
Good one.
Let's see, um, the, speaking of, of holiday spirit and so on, the community center, ex, uh, Christmas program is going on now. I think there was, you know, the program is, provides, uh, um, presents, toys, clothing to, um, needy families. And I think, Brenda, you do that?
Yeah.
Yes, Bonnie and I do it as well, and, uh, so I think we had an eleven-year-old and a six-year-old that, that we were, uh, supplying this year, so. But it's a great program and, uh, it, uh, so, I think this week was all of the, uh, uh, the sponsors bringing items in, and I think, is it next week when they distribute?
I think so, I'm not involved in the distribution, but, um, yeah, no.
Susan's shaking her head, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. There's, uh, I think, I think it's close to two hundred and fifty kids that, 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 that are being adopted or helped or however you wanna say it.
Yeah, and they do a great job there, there's, there's the team, I mean, they wrap everything and then they get everything organized and then the day of, I mean, it's, it's.
They still need people to do it, or?
Uh, I think they've got it covered, you know, typically, um, you know, they, they, there's volunteers that, for the day of, uh, I'm not sure. You know, I've done, in the past couple of years, I've kind of done the traffic thing, you know, just directing people, but, uh, I think in terms of the real work, they've got it pretty well organized, so, so it's a good, good, good program.
Jennifer Wolfing is, she, you know, she's kind of like the, the head elf. And, uh, going today to, to, to bring our gifts, it's like, it's, it's just, it's one of my favorite things about this town. It's just, it's such a good feeling, all the, all, everything piled up, there were bikes today, I mean, it was, I mean, people are so generous.
Yeah.
So, um, you know, it's just, it's, it's amazing.
And it's all anonymous, all you know is the age and, and what is on their wish list, and, uh, it's, it's all, it's good stuff. So tomorrow, Thursday, the eighth, uh, the senior holiday party is taking place at the community center, sponsored from, by the Friends of the Community, like, the Council on Aging, and I understand it's sold out, so, uh, you know, you can't, uh, won't get, sneak in there, get, yeah, crashing it and getting a free meal, so I'll make sure Rita is, is.
Just taken care of, it's, good, very good.
But that's tomorrow, that's always a, a, a good event, and, uh, so, and then lastly, um, the Lions, uh, the Ashland Lions Club still has trees available, so come on down.
Harip and buy them before I have to go out there again.
Well, I'm scheduled for Saturday morning, I hope, I hope it doesn't rain, uh, but, uh, we've had, uh, some pretty good sales. I'm not quite sure what the, have you worked there at all this week?
There was one Sunday that I was supposed to work from six to eight, but it was raining, so they canceled, and then the rest of the time, I, I'm just.
Your foot's like, yeah.
So it's all, uh, all good stuff, so.
It was a good time.
Yeah, yeah, that's my tune tonight.
All right, thanks, Steve.
Yeah, just, uh, yeah, a few things, uh, one, I went to the, uh, vaccine clinic today that Rajid had put together with our new public health nurse, whose name is escaping, um, Jess, she seemed very good, so. That was a good, good experience and I understand we're gonna try to keep, continue doing them, so that's great, um.
Do we have the most up-to-date vaccine for COVID?
God, I hope so. Oh, well, give me the retreads.
Well, I mean, there's been different ones, so like, the, the most up-to-date has like Omicron, you know.
Yeah.
Oh, that's weird enough.
And the other thing is, uh, I've been on the, um, the MMA Policy Committee on Public Works Transportation and Utilities, as you recall, which is mostly about chapter ninety, and, um, discussed it, and I haven't been able to attend very consistently over the last, say, seven or eight months, uh, but this is the time of year where we asked to renew, to continue on, and I did, um, with Mike's, uh, permission, get, got Doug involved, and Doug actually, Doug Small, our DPW director, went to one of the, these meetings are, um, uh, monthly and virtual, so he can kind of tune in and, um, he went to one and seemed to like it. So Doug is, uh, kind of tentatively committed to kind of taking over or being involved in that, which is something. So if we get renewed, which I think we would, uh, you know, I'd like to come back here and maybe discuss Doug, uh, being our rep there. And it's funny, he actually knew some of the characters on the call too, so that was.
That's a personal thing, right? We don't appoint you to that, you decided to run for that through the.
I think you did. Uh, no, you, well, you, you did appoint me.
Not a policy, because I'm on an MA, MA, MMA policy committee and I just decided on my own to do that, no, we don't appoint you for that, so.
Oh, I thought you did appoint, okay. Anyway, yeah, I think, well, rather, we needed to, I think you did, at some point, a year, a year and a half ago, something like that, but anyway. So we can come back and discuss it or, you know, people, but Doug so far is willing to do it, so I think that'd be great, uh, yeah. Well, virtually, anyway. And it is, and it talks about grant programs, it's not just, um, chapter ninety, it's, uh, utilities and transportation and all sorts of infrastructure, wastewater, uh, sometimes it gets quite technical, so that's good. And the, the third item was that, uh, this morning, we had a very good commuter rail meeting, uh, with the MBTA Advisory Board, and, uh, they did announce that they are going to renovate the Ashland Station, um, I think all these letters, I mean, because I started, I brought it up and started talking, well, what about, said, we are going to come to Ashland, uh, in February or March to renovate the station. Well, what's that? Well, so, uh, he made a, well, he, he said a list of things during the meeting, stairway replacement, um, screen replacement, Ashland Mass, yeah, uh, so, uh.
I'm repeating Joe's question, what year?
He said, ma, to manage expectations, it won't be till February or March.
Of twenty-three?
I didn't ask him that, but.
That's awesome.
But I, yes, and so.
That is huge.
The other, and so I'm going to follow up with the Keola's person, um, to get the details of what they're gonna, yes, no, you're right. Uh, and so, but that seems to be good news that they're going to do something significant, whether, how significant, I think we need to see the details, uh, so, uh, that was, that was good news, um, and, uh, so I'll follow up on that one. And some of the other things we talked about, I think, which are, you know, they're undertaking a safety initiative with commuter rail, which includes, uh, uh, you know, they're, they've done an analysis of all the crossings, um, so I asked that they kind of share that with all the cities and towns, like, it'd be interesting to see what our crossings look like in their analysis, and they're asking for a federal grant for, to improve safety at crossings, and also, um, and I don't know, we're kind of in a special class because of the work we're gonna, we're doing now and are gonna do in the future, so I don't know how that, or if they're, you must work with them a lot on that, right, on the crossing and stuff, so. The quiet zone, yeah, so, yeah, um, so I didn't, I didn't bring that up with the committee, but they're also, which I thought was really good, they're aware of the suicide issue with trains and they're actually working with Samaritans to put up signs, and, um, you know, I urged them to look at some of the other measures they can take to kind of discourage, we've had, you know, of course, a problem with that. And the third thing they wanted, they want us to remind municipalities not to salt the crossings, I don't know, I imagine we know how to do that. Okay, so we said, ended with that.
I hate to say this, but motion to go past ten o'clock, because it's ten o'clock.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Uh, yeah, and the, and the third thing we emphasized is ongoing communication, to communicate directly with municipalities and advisory board members about all these things, and we're gonna continue to have these meetings every couple of months, and they, they've been very constructive with the MBTA and the Keola's reps, so, and we'll see.
That's awesome news about the station.
Yeah, I think so, yeah, must've been that last letter that did it.
Last bad, so, looking forward to getting some specifics.
We're four and past ten o'clock.
Yeah, all right, thank you, that's it.
You all good?
Yeah.
All right, so the only thing I have is, it is, it is that time of year, folks. So this started when I first, when I first was elected, uh, I put together a poem, is sort of a tongue-in-cheek, kind of like, everything that we've gone through for the year, and it has, I've done this every year, and it's become one of my absolute favorite ways to look back at all the stuff that we've done, and so, um, it's also a really good way to procrastinate doing Christmas cards, so. I have not done a card yet this year. Um, so, uh, so without further ado, I present to you Ode to Ashland Twenty Twenty-Two. Coming out of COVID, it was a crazy, busy year, hybrid meetings were the norm with most of us here. We were under construction all over town with detours, bumpy roads and traffic, patience was down. The public safety building is pretty much done, so many opinions about the clock, there were a ton. Raising the beam at the Mendez School, kids will move in next fall, which will be very cool. On one twenty-six, new sidewalks and a roundabout, after some initial confusion, folks figured it out. Downtown is starting to look really great with new granite curbing included in the contracted rate. Ribbon cuttings to welcome amazing businesses that we court, kids in motion, my Ashland office, Crossroads PT and Zeta Fencing, you know, fencing the sport. Our first female police chief breaking the glass and Candy heading up our senior center up to the task. Vaccine clinics given at town hall and a new publication, Ashland Access for All. From summer camp to turkey dinners and the holiday gifts, our community center team gives all of our residents a lift. Work begins on the Valentine with help from ARPA funds and volunteers that shine. Plans for a pollinator garden and park for Cadillac paint, a beautiful open space to walk, which will be great. We watched very carefully over Hall House and requested interest in our firehouse. We've had dog hearings and lots of painful trash woes, award community BAA grants for marathon fundraising flows. So many projects filed with the planning board, even a Starbucks for caffeine to be poured. Lots of mixed use with apartments to come, mill buildings have a long road ahead at a minimum. Starting to work on the comprehensive plan which coincides with the housing moratorium ban. Recommendations made by our DNI Task Force and a strategic plan for our library, ambitious, of course. For me personally, I ran for my second term, still love the work, most days, I can reaffirm. Started my first time as chair, always striving to be organized, patient, kind and fair. We've had lots of fun this year too, fifth birthday at Corner Spot and Hometown Parade that was new. Trick-or-treating in town hall with scary decor. Trick or treating in town hall with scary decor. Perfect costumes included a speed bump, orange cone and sign for Detour. Hey, that one was good, huh? Learned a few things about the game of cricket, celebrated Juneteenth with area and Ashland is united. Pumpkin Fest and an amazing holiday stroll, Dragonfly Farmer's Market, Dewali and Movie Night with Community the Goal. There are always challenges, so much to do and things on social media are not always true. Looking ahead, projects will be complete, giving a teeny bit of breathing room, not an easy feat. An economic development bill on which we wait, plans and fundraising for the YMCA, which will be great. Our town staff is the best in all that they do and all of our volunteers that bleed Ashland blue. The question is, will it be Steve's last year? If it is, his impact on this board has been very clear. I am lucky to serve with you all who I deeply respect and thankful for the community which we protect. And as we approach the end of this crazy year, I wish you and yours so much holiday cheer. So that is this year, this year in poem form, so. It is a lot, it is a lot.
Very good.
So I think that's a that's a credit to all of us and all the folks that that we work with and support.
Creative minds.
So, so, but, so on that note, unless anybody else has anything else, this is our last, this is our last meeting of of twenty twenty-two. And so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Joe said so moved, I say second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
So wishing everybody a happy holiday.
Happy holidays, be safe.
Yep, we will see you all. We will all see you in.
January fourth.
Yeah, first Wednesday in January. So, and thank you, and thank you and happy holidays to all the folks at WACA.
And thank you, Sue, for all you do.
Yep.
Yes, thank you.
Appreciate it, Susan. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right, I think we are all set. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
Good night.
Good night.
We do have to sign the thing, so ten oh five. I do, I do really, it was a long one, there's a lot of stuff.